Good morning, Counselor Keenan. Can we check your audio, please?
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Counselor Paleshi. Can we check your audio, please? Thank you. Good morning, Counselor Maderos. Can we check your audio, please?
Good morning.
Thank you.
We'll call it to order. As we begin today's meeting, we would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the Treaty Territory of the Mississaugas, of the Credit First Nation, and before them, the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee, Huron, and Wendat. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other Global Indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, you may be seated. Welcome to our regular council meeting of May 1st, 2024. All members are present at today's meeting in person or remotely, except for Mayor Brown is currently at an announcement in Callahan and on his way. Anybody else?
I've actually walked on virtual.
Okay, great.
To go to City Hall.
Okay, we'll see you shortly. Anybody else?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. Everybody is showing either online or in person.
Okay, perfect. We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any added items from the Clerk's office?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. We do not have any added items from the Clerk's office.
Okay, and I see Counselor Santos on the board.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Not in addition to the agenda, but I'm wondering if we could bring up the delegation regarding the winter maintenance and deal with that first. I have to go virtual at 10:30 a.m. for an event at Peel Regional Police for Asian Heritage Month and just have some questions with respect to that report.
Okay, that would be delegation seven point...
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. It's delegation seven point four?
Seven point four, which will be moved.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Singh, I have one item, just a technical matter related to Amadea Gate that is required before their unveiling, so I could add that to the agenda. I was advised as issued from Public Works and NRCO.
Added discussion item on the Amadea Gate.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. That is already showing on the revised agenda as a discussion item.
Okay, so we have a motion moved by Counselor Santos and seconded by Mayor Brown to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Motion carries. We are now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? I don't see or hear none, so that is noted. Adoption of the minute, we are now ready to move to the next item of public business on today's council agenda, item four, minutes. We have the following minutes before us today. Minutes, City Council regular meeting, April 17th, 2024. Any members have any question or comments regarding the minutes? I don't see any, so I have a motion moved by Counselor Brar and seconded by Counselor Vicente to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All in favor? The motion carries. Council, as part of our consent motion process, I will read each agenda item. That is subject to the consent motion, and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion and voted on for approval. So by reading the relevant agenda items, the members can identify any items to be held for debate. I will ask the Clerk's assistant to read out the agenda items. Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. So the items up for consent are as follows. Seven point one, staff presentation, shared e-scooter pilot program update that is held for delegations. Eight point one, staff update regarding government relations matters. Is there anybody who would like to hold that? That is in consent.
What about the presentation with us, though?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Singh. It's a presentation. If anybody would like to hear the presentation, we can hold the item.
Yeah, yes, please hold.
So eight point one is held for presentation. Item 10.3.1, Staff Recommendation Report Regarding Changes Proposed to Development Charges Act 1997 through Bill 185. That is in consent. Item 10.4.1, Staff Recommendation Report Regarding City Comments on the Proposed Provincial Planning Statement 2024. That is in consent. Item 10.4.2, Staff Recommendation Report Regarding City Comments on Bill 185, Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act 2024. That is in consent. Item 12.1, Minutes Planning and Development Committee from April 8th, 2024. That is in consent. Item 12.2, Minutes Committee of Council, April 10th, 2024. That is in consent. Item 12.3, Summary of Recommendations, Planning and Development Committee, April 22nd, 2024. That is in consent. Item 12.4, Summary of Recommendations, Committee of Council, April 24th, 2024. That will be held as there is a related delegation. Item 13.1, Staff Report Regarding the Shared e-Scooter Pilot Program Update that is held for delegations and staff presentation. Item 13.2, Staff Report Regarding Budget Amendment and Award Strategy for NRFP 2024-91, Winter Maintenance Services 2024 to 2034 All Awards. That is held, as the report does have options that council will need to determine, and there is an associated delegation. Item 13.3, Discussion Item at the Request of Regional Counselor Paleshi Regarding Services for the Environmental Education Center. That is held for discussion. Item 14.1, Correspondence from Carrie Percival, Chair of the Downtown Brampton BIA, dated April 19th, Regarding Vacancies on the Board of Directors. That is in consent. Item 16.2, Discussion Item at the Request of Mayor Brown Regarding Amadea Gate. That is held for discussion. Item 16.3, Discussion Item at the Request of Mayor Brown Regarding Jay's Care Foundation. That is held for discussion. Item 19.1, Closed Session Minutes, City Council, April 17th, 2024. That is in consent. Item 19.2, Closed Session Minutes, Committee of Council, April 24th, 2024. I would just like to note for council that there is a correction to be made regarding a municipal address. This can be placed in consent with the correction to be made. Not hearing from anyone, we'll place that in consent as well.
Thank you. So I have a motion moved by Counselor Power and seconded by Counselor Vicente to approve the consent motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to announcements, we have announcements sponsored by Mayor Brown and Regional Counselor Brar, and we also have Cindy Anne Williams, Coordinator, Brampton Equity Office, also joining us. Do you want to make any statements before passing it on to... Okay, well, we've asked, we've, okay, we're requesting the Equity Office to please say a few words.
My name is Rosella Johnson. I'm the Senior Advisor in the Equity Office for Indigenous Relations for the City of Brampton. Minooka Jup, good morning, Mayor Brown, and city councillors, staff, and guests. We wanted to take this opportunity to introduce the installation of the red dresses in the Kenwillan Square to raise awareness about the murdered and missing Indigenous women, girls, and Two-Spirited People in Canada. Every year on May 5th, we recognize Red Dress Day to honor those who have been murdered or have gone missing and to acknowledge the families and communities who live with the grief and unanswered questions about their loved ones. The Equity Office would like to extend our serest gratitude and thanks to the following people without whom the work of creating the installation and spreading this important message would not be possible. Our partners at the Indigenous Network and the Peel Regional Police, the City of Brampton staff from facilities, operations and maintenance, park maintenance and forestry, strategic communications, fire, transit, protocol, security, recreation, and the Brampton Youth Hub, as well as members of the Black Employee Empowerment Network and the Women's Empowerment Network, those resource groups, employee resource groups, everyone who gave kindly a red dress for the installation to make it possible. And we'd like to extend an invitation on May 2nd at 10 a.m. in the Kenwillan Square, which is next right here beside City Hall, for the unveiling of the installation. This installation, along with others, will be also located at Fire, Transit, Recreation, and the Youth Hub, and will be available, information will be available on the posters for people to get more information. This is about raising awareness for missing and murdered Indigenous women, and this installation is just one, one way of raising that awareness. And so we are very grateful for everybody that's helped us to raise awareness and step up the campaign to, to create a greater awareness about this issue, this invisible issue.
Thank you. Counselor Brar?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to the Equity Office for putting in such great work, working together, collaborating with everyone, and I think, you know, when we look at the empty dresses that really remind us of the lives and the sadness of the grieving families and the meaningful action that is still needed, you set it, you know, you set it right on, we need more awareness, and really encourage our council members, the public, to come... our council members, the public to come to our installation tomorrow and really support that. So again, thank you so much uh for everything you've guys done because it's not easy and it takes a lot of work, so thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, um Mr. Chair, thank you to the Equity Office and our very proud Women's Empowerment Group, if I can just acknowledge all of them as well. Counselor Brar and I will continue to talk about ending gender-based violence in any opportunity that we have and certainly the impact of the installation in Ken Willen Square is another way where we're elevating the conversation and the awareness on this particular issue. Counselor Brar and I will ongoingly say that women will never achieve equality anywhere until we address gender-based violence. And the issue of missing and murdered Indigenous women and children, that level of violence has existed in Canadian society well before we declared an epidemic. And so the work that we are doing as a city to ongoingly increase the awareness on the issue of ending gender-based violence and particularly this one, which unfortunately in the past always gets buried figuratively and literally, um to now elevate it through art in this installation will hopefully also elevate the conversation about some of the hidden violence against women, um particularly with Indigenous and missing murdered women and children. So thank you for bringing to light in a creative way the sad story that we all have to face. Um and as uh women and allies on this council, certainly you'll be seeing us um promote and increase awareness on the installation, thank you.
Thank you, and I've requested from Counselor Power to take a picture uh together as well, thank you. Thank you, and our next item is six point two, an announcement regarding the Atiba Hutchinson's Soccer Courts. Regional Counselor Santos is a sponsor, joining us today online is Atiba Hutchinson and Alex, President of Atiba Hutchinson Foundation. Counselor Santos.
Thank you so much, I know um Atiba and Alex will be joining us online shortly, I just wanted to say thank you to Atiba and Alex for your ongoing passion in the sport. We are so proud of you and so honored to have the Atiba Hutchinson Soccer Court open up in Century Gardens very soon, and um I know you have a lot more to say, but um unfortunately I'm going to be away uh during the uh the official grand opening and inaugural tournament, which is why I wanted to make sure that this announcement was shared well ahead of time to increase the notice about this, but also to preemptively celebrate um the grand opening, which is happening on uh May the seventeenth. Over to you.
Hello, everyone, um first of all, I'm, I'm, I would like to thank Mayor Brown and the city, uh Brampton, for making this possible. You know, I, I moved away from Canada at a very young age and I got the chance to experience something very similar to what we are doing here in Brampton with the the soccer courts uh over there in Europe and I really got to see how we would bring communities together, um you know, put smiles on on kids, you know, and and grown-ups faces and uh just see really how how happy people were to to be on those type of of pitches and um for us to have this chance to to bring this over to to Canada, to Brampton, I think it's it's something really, really special and um, you know, I'm really looking forward to to seeing how the people, you know, bring this in and and, you know, the thoughts that that it has um in, you know, people's minds. Yeah, I think it's going to be a great, you know, way to to bring communities together, um to bring kids off of the streets and just to go out there and and have fun and enjoy themselves and and socialize, I think that's that's really important. Obviously, you know, soccer is a growing sport in Canada now, we've got the World Cup coming in in two years and um yeah, I think a lot of kids are are really excited about what's going on in Canada and I think this is the perfect time to, you know, to bring this to to Canada and and for it to be, you know, in Brampton, you know, my hometown, I'm extremely uh excited about it, um you know, we've got a a foundation set up, so yeah, it's it's just all in purpose of of it just changing things and and hopefully changing a few lives uh along the way, so uh you know, we're extremely proud of of, you know, this step and what it's going to do to to the country and to Brampton itself, so um just extremely proud and and I just want to thank everybody that's been involved and and a part of this and can't wait to to see the opening of it. Um you know, I've seen some videos, I got a chance to see it uh when I was back home a month ago, um but still uh not the the complete um product. Uh I don't know if I want to see it until I'm I'm actually there, but yeah, I'm I'm just extremely excited about it and uh I'm happy that we can all do this together.
Well, Atiba, thank you for taking the the time today, what an honor to have you uh delegating it at Brampton City Hall, it's Mayor Brown here, I'll just rejoin the meeting. I believe Counselor Santos will have a motion that is uh to go along with the naming of this of this facility, but what an honor um it is for the City of Brampton to say uh that the great Atiba Hutchinson is from uh our city. Um you have inspired so many young kids in our community, um the first Canadian soccer player with over a hundred caps, uh success um in leagues across the world and boy was it phenomenal seeing Canada qualify for the World Cup uh on under your uh leadership. You know, for someone like yourself who has achieved so much success uh uh um in the world of of football, um to always remember your hometown roots is a beautiful thing. Um and so I want to thank you, you know, it was Atiba who first reached out a few years ago when we started this project, saying that he wanted to give back, that he wanted to support young people um in the area that he grew up playing, playing uh soccer, or football as they say in the in in Europe, but just thank you for um having that pride in our city um and never forgetting uh your roots, that is unique and special. Um I had the chance to watch the game where Canada beat the US with your parents, um and it was just incredible to hear about your journey, it is, it is one that is um inspiring. Uh Counselor Santos mentioned um that we should share with the city that is listening or watching what's happening on May seventeenth, I believe we have a bit of an event as part of this uh unveiling, are you able to share more details about uh uh what we're doing on May seventeenth?
Me myself, yes, of course, um yes, so our plans are um of having a tournament, so to bring kids out, um you know, it's the the first inaugural tournament um in the foundation's name, um yeah, you know, hopefully it's the first of many, um I think it's, it's always great to have these these type of tournaments and for it to be obviously in Brampton, uh with us all doing it together, I think it's uh it's got a lot of potential and yeah, you know, we've been planning a lot and and making sure that this is all set up right and uh you know, the kids will will just have the time of their lives, so um you know, I always remember the tournaments as a young boy and uh just loved every moment of those tournaments, so um for us to have a chance to do this in Brampton, yeah, it's 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 going to be something really special and, you know, hopefully it's uh the first of many to come.
Well, um Atiba, thank you so much and we're really looking forward in the City of Brampton um for that that event, I must, I must add, I'm also looking forward to the release of your uh autobiography that I believe is uh coming in a few months as well, so lots of exciting things happening um uh with Atiba Hutchinson and know that Brampton is always going to be your number one uh cheerleader. So thank you for uh sharing the good news with us today, um and uh we look forward to seeing you on on May seventeenth.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me and yeah, once again, thanks for everything you guys have done, um I'm really grateful and I really appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that's unique, it's not every day you have a international soccer superstar delegating to uh to to council. Our next item is proclamations, we have a number, there's no added announcements that I missed, right?
Three, Mayor Brown, there are no added announcements.
Okay, so that takes us to proclamations, we have a number of proclamations. The first is Gujarat Day, um I don't see anyone from the association uh here today, but I know they have a flag raising later today. Friends of Gujarat is a not-for-profit initiative of Canadian Gujaratis to connect Gujaratis to the mainstream, promote the arts and culture of Gujarat, there are over three hundred and fifty thousand Gujaratis in Canada and over fifty thousand residing in Brampton. Gujarat is a state of Western India, sometimes referred to as the jewel of Western India, it has, it has an area of a hundred ninety-six thousand square kilometers with coastline of a sixteen hundred kilometers and a population in excess of sixty million. It is the economic titan of India right now, um Gujarat is home of the Gujarati-speaking people of India. Gujarat Day aims to bring the community together and help create a voice of Gujaratis in Brampton, help promote the rich arts and culture of Gujarat. Uh the day will be celebrated in Brampton with a flag raising ceremony, which will have cultural dances and speeches uh from the members of the local community, and so we proclaim this day, May first, as Gujarat Day. Um as someone who's been to Gujarat nine times and does a lot of event in the community here in in Brampton, it really is an extraordinary community. I would note, they also have the largest cricket stadium in the world in Ahmedabad, um and uh the most fierce kite festivals in the world every January, uh and uh I'm sure we'll be able to celebrate that unique culture uh later uh today, um when they have their flag raising. Our our Deputy Mayor is also a big fan of Gujarat, he was there for the G twenty uh last year in Ahmedabad. Our next proclamation is Community Living. We'll find where that is, do you have any representatives from Community Living here today? Okay, great, well, we'll present this proclamation to you. Each year, Community Living Ontario designates May as Community Living Month, a province-wide celebration that is an opportunity to raise awareness in our local community as to how we can collectively support full participation, inclusion and citizenship of people with an intellectual disability. Brampton Calhoun Community Living is committed to informing our community and working with our partners to create an inclusive community where people with an intellectual disability can participate, contribute and share in all elements of community living. Brampton Calhoun Community Living envisions a world that respects and embraces the dignity, inherent value and rights of all people and wishes to empower people who have an intellectual disability to lead enriched and meaningful lives. Community Living Month is a month in which we celebrate the talents and gifts that people with intellectual disabilities bring to our community. In honor of Community Living Month, everyone is encouraged to wear blue-green on May ninth, and we declare this day um in the City of Brampton, and so if there's a representative of uh Community Living Month that would like to respond to the proclamation, otherwise we can take a group uh photo together with the proclamation. Okay, great, and we'll present this proclamation officially to you, and if Counselors can join me. Our next item is Doctors' Day. Ontario is grateful to the physicians who worked tirelessly on our extraordinary responsibility of caring for our health and wellbeing. Brampton loves doctors, so uh we are also recognizing May first as Doctors' Day in the City of Brampton, um and this is a province-wide campaign to have an expression of appreciation, and this is organized by the Ontario Medical Association. We'll be raising a flag uh in Brampton and in other cities around Ontario to pay tribute to our physicians and certainly if you look in Brampton at uh William Oster and in family medicine offices, uh we've got some phenomenal physicians in in our community. Our next item is Emergency Preparedness Week and um anyone here from that organization? Okay, great, okay. Emergency Preparedness Week, or EP Week, is a national event that takes place every year during the first full week of May. This year's EP Week runs from May fifth to eleventh. The intent of the week is to promote and educate and bring awareness to how residents can better be prepared in the event of an emergency, like preparing for an ice storm or power outage, a flooding event. The kickoff, the kickoff event for EP Week will be held on May first, twenty twenty-four at the Bramley City uh Center Mall. The Brampton Emergency Management Office, BMO, will continue its public education initiatives focusing on building emergency kits and vulnerable residents obtaining content insurance. During the week, BMO will distribute over three hundred emergency kits during EP Week. With the help of A- Achieve Brampton and Peel Human Services Peel Living, through the EP Week, BMO will be engaging in setting up public education booths at various locations across the city to interact with the public, empowering them to take action to protect themselves and their family in the event of an emergency or disaster. Would Representative like to speak to the proclamation? Oh, just a photo, okay, so I'll ask council members to join me as we present this um proclamation. It is also Business Continuity and Resilience Week, um which is from May thirteenth to seventeen. And uh this uh program um evaluates risks faced by corporation, develops plans and procedures to ensure the continuation of um municipal services, and so we actually declare this week uh from May thirteenth to seventeen. I don't see, I don't think there's any representative for this week, but we do, oh, okay, great, okay. Uh we don't have an official frame scroll, uh but we want to acknowledge that um a lunch and learn session will provide information on how employees can prepare for workplace emergencies. The City of Brampton will also post information on internal and public sites for those looking to build continuity plans and develop further resiliency within their organization. This is an opportunity to raise the profile of business readiness and to encourage organizations to develop, review and revise their continuity plans and document strategies that will ensure the continuation of vital services. and document strategies that will ensure the continuation of vital services. We do proclaim this week as well, and thank you for your work. Is there anything you wanted to add to the proclamation? Okay, great. Our next proclamation is for Aproxia Awareness Day. And May fourteenth marks Childhood Aproxia of Speech Day, during which awarenesses will be raised throughout Brampton about childhood aproxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in one thousand children. Childhood aproxia of speech, otherwise known as CAS, causes children to have significantly difficulty learning to speak and among the most severe speech deficits in children. The act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children. Those with aproxia require early, appropriate, intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. Without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with aproxia will have diminished communication skills, but are also placed in a high, a high risk for secondary impacts of reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. Public awareness is important, and we do so in Brampton, helping children learn to use their own voice through these critical services. Aproxia Kids is a leading non-for-profit to strengthen support systems in the lives of children with aproxia of speech. So the city of Brampton does declare May fourteenth as Aproxia Awareness Day. Anyone from Aproxia Awareness Day here today? No, but we will declare this day for May fourteenth. It is also National Youth Week. May first to seventh marks National Youth Week in Canada. This week is dedicated to the celebration of youth and their active participation in their community. Meaningful youth engagement emphasizes access, equity, and social fairness, and leads to positive youth and community development. National Youth Week reminds us of the valuable contributions that youth-centric programs can make to youth development and that youth can make to community development. And Brampton youth-serving organizations and cross-functional city departments place an emphasis on the importance of intentional youth developments through opportunities in arts, drama, recreation, sports, civic engagement network, and career-building, volunteerism, and leadership training. In recognition of these benefits and values, residents are encouraged to recognize and support the positive contributions of youth in our community. And we declare this week, May first to seventh. Anyone from youth, National Youth Week here? No, well, we, oh, do we? Okay, okay. Well, we do have some youthful members of our city Brampton team, and we do declare National Youth Week. Our last proclamation, I believe this has been done before I got here, and that's for Red Dress Day. We did take a photo, and have we declared the proclamation? So Red Dress Day is proclaimed from May fifth in the city of Brampton. Okay, so that covers all our proclamations. And we have delegations now. Now, I see a note here that there's been a change in the order of the delegation.
Through you, Mayor Brown. We will be dealing with delegation seven point one first, which is a delegation from Sylvia Roberts regarding item thirteen point two, the Winter Maintenance Services Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if we could read the proclamation for Red Dress Day. We did read it during the
Okay, sure.
Before we go into the proclamation.
Red Dress Day was first observed on May fifth, two thousand and ten, with the goal of honoring and bringing awareness to the thousands of Indigenous women, girls, and Two-Spirit people who have gone missing or have been murdered. Inspired by Jamie Black, a Maitai artist based in Winnipeg, Manitoba, hundreds of empty red dresses were hung in public places to represent missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and Two-Spirit people. Brampton is committed to truth and reconciliation. City Council passed motion C two four eight, twenty nineteen, adopting the calls for justice released in the final report of the national inquiry into MM one IW two GS. And this, this call for justice that are addressed by this initiative are, one point now, what we call upon the government to develop laws, policies, and public education campaigns to challenge the acceptance and normalization of violence. Two point six, we call upon all governments to educate their citizens about and to confront and eliminate racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and develop action plans to end racist and sexualized stereotypes of Indigenous women, girls, and Two-S-L-G-B, Two-Q-Q-I-A people. The plan must target the general public as well as public services. These calls for action will align with the motion CW two four one two, twenty twenty-three, which declares gender-based violence, intimate partner violence, an epidemic in Brampton. On Thursday, May second, at ten a.m., the Indigenous Network and Peel Regional Police in partnership with the city of Brampton's Equity Office will unveil our red dress installation at Kenwillan Square. The installation will remain open along the walkway beside the city hall until May thirty-first. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May fifth, twenty twenty-four, as Red Dress Day in the city of Brampton. And thank you for, Counselor Santos and Brower for your advocacy on this. And thank you for being here today. We look forward for this, for this official unveiling on May second. So we've moved up the delegation regards to snow removal. And I believe we're moving up the report to accommodate Counselor Santos's schedule. So the first delegation on snow removal, Sylvia Roberts.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts. I'm a resident of Brampton, specifically Ward Three. As some of you may know, I was injured several years back because of result of unclear snow on the sidewalk. There was a big snowfall in the snow compound on the sidewalk, and no one could remove it. And so to get around that, I had to walk in the street, and I was hit by a car. Since then, I have lived with chronic pain. And it has significantly impacted what I can do. This has been a chronic issue in the city that we do not clear the sidewalks. Previous terms of council said, well, we're currently in the later stages of a contract. It'll be way too expensive to go into this and add snow removal. You have to wait for the next contract. Well, this is that contract. It's, I know there's options here for six, eight, or ten years. And I'm going to guess that you're likely going to look at longer time period because that's generally cheaper or cost-effective. So at the six-year mark, we need to plan not just for the city today, but the city in twenty thirty. If we're looking at ten years from now, then we're looking at twenty thirty-four. There are parts of Brampton that are quite urban. For example, in K section, there's a lot of people who live in high-rises. And I have talked to seniors for whom their ability to get out during the winter is severely limited because their building may remove the snow. But if I need to get somewhere and one of the driveways is just covered with snow, and they didn't remove it, and now it's gone through freeze-thaw cycle and it's now ice, it's completely unsafe to walk over. So my request is we real, if we are serious about active transportation goals, if we are serious about increasing transit ridership, then we need to make it safe for people to be able to go and walk to their daily needs, to be able to safely walk and go to the bus. So when you, when you debate this, please consider that. And that if you don't, how are you going to actually be able to say, yes, we, we care about active transportation, but we're also not willing to put in the effort and the resources to make sure it happens? That's my delegation.
Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you for being here. So can we move up the staff report? I know for the winter snow maintenance? Thirteen two. Counselor Santos, I believe you were the one that held it. So we'll have Counselor Santos up first.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I have just a few questions for clarification and a suggestion around the time of the contract itself. First, in follow-up to the delegation, to the staff, how are we prioritizing the, to Sylvia's point, the active transportation network, not just the, not just the bike lanes or active transportation lanes, but also the sidewalk clearing, as well as the trail clearing, and the access to bus transit stops? How is that prioritized in the pecking order when it comes to maintenance in this contract or this RFP?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Counselor Santos, there's been a number of additional vehicles added to address specifically those items, active transportation, clearing of sidewalks, and recreational trails. As soon as a storm event commences, we dispatch units as soon as is appropriate. We don't necessarily wait to the end of the storm. And with the additional units, we do foresee that we're going to improve our timelines quite considerably. And we can expect that within twenty-four hours from the end of a storm, we expect during typical storm events that we'll have completed our operations across our entire network.
Great. And, and because I think Sylvia also brings up a good point. We just came back from advocacy in Ottawa, and we shared how many, our growth ridership, and how many people in, in the city of Brampton who take transit. And certainly, in the winter, they need access to the paths and to the first mile, last mile in order to get to those transit stops on time and safely so that they can take and continue to take Brampton Transit. Are we looking at kind of people's routes as they access those transit stop locations?
Through the Chair, Counselor Santos, as I mentioned, we have added a considerable amount, amount of new units to address specifically transit stops. And we are also going to ensure that there is a continuous pedestrian facility to basically get to those transit stops to make it clear for, for the pedestrians.
Thank you very much. And then my next question is in, is more, is about the whole entire winter, winter maintenance RFP. We got locked into in this, actually, since the previous term of council, a seven-year contract. And there were a lot of complaints that showed up, and we struggled to find ways to hold that contract and contractor accountable for poor performance and poor service levels as, as residents were complaining, businesses were complaining. How in this RFP are we accommodating an increase of quality control, holding the contractor accountable? And what are the, I guess, what is the consequences of not fulfilling certain service levels?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Counselor Santos, with respect to this new contract, we did increase the liquidated damages. There's going to be additional oversight to make sure the performance is appropriate. We also added not only additional equipment, but we put new age requirements. So we're going to have new equipment, that's newer equipment, that's going to lead to less breakdowns. And we also included termination clauses in the contract. In the event that there are performance issues, we will now have those levers to pull with respect to potentially terminating the contract earlier on if it needs to get to that. But again, going forward, there is going to be a focus in terms of proper contract management. And with the new liquidated damages that we do have in this new contract, we believe we're going to be able to hold the contractors accountable and ensure good performance.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So for example, I know that in, in parks, we increased our budget this year to actually have one person or two people, one person, I think, responsible for contract management and quality control, and doing more inspections after the work is done to ensure that the work is being done at a higher quality in order to deal with contractors who are not fulfilling their role. Is there something similar now in public works that, that has somebody dedicated to look at their performance?
Yes, through, through the Chair, to Counselor Santos, we will be increasing our inspections both during the storm and after storm events to ensure that the performance requirements are being met. And we're going to have additional staff oversight, as well as additional oversight from the contractors themselves to ensure the quality of the work that they're doing.
Okay, that's great. That's good to hear. And then my final question is about the assumptions that are made in the RFP. So because of climate change, weather is going to change significantly over a ten-year period. And we saw that actually in this past year where we had very little snow. If not, maybe there were three snow, major snow occasions, maybe less. And so in the base assumption of how the RFP was developed, was the assumption based on, like, how, how are we including forecast and weather conditions and climate change in a situation where, yes, people want snow clearing, but also it's not going to snow, probably not as much as it has in the past? And so if we're locking ourselves into a ten-year contract, we could be faced with a situation where there's a December and January with no snow. So how have we adjusted the RFP to accommodate such a changing context of, of weather conditions with respect to snow? Or are we locking, like, contractors in for a long period of time where eight years from now, we're paying for a service and there's no snow?
So through the Chair, Counselor Santos, what we have done with respect is climate change is obviously top of mind. We get a lot more, atypical events are becoming more common. That, that presents a risk to the city in terms of having storm events, although perhaps not as frequent throughout the year as, as you've indicated. They can happen earlier in the season and later in the season. So we've actually made provisions to have equipment available to us to protect the city's interest. With respect to the way these contracts are set up, you need the equipment, we need the equipment. You need it for the duration of, of the, of the winter season. So we are going to have that equipment there. But going forward, if years from now, the, the, you know, the weather patterns have changed sufficiently enough, we'd be in a position to look at not increasing the number of units, for example, so we wouldn't need as many units. But at the end of the day, what we've done through this new contract is we've actually protected the city from those atypical events that can happen a little earlier or later in the season to make sure that we're covered and have the resources we require. Correct. And through, through the Chair, Counselor Santos, the other point is there is a standby cost associated with having the equipment available. However, if you have a lighter winter, what it means is you don't pay the operating hour. So if, if that equipment's not working, we wouldn't be incurring those, those operating costs. So the contractor's structured in such a way that will only incur the standby costs. In the event that you have a light winter, you're going to pay less money on the operating side of things.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I think that's great because that's the flexibility, I think, that we need. So for example, if we are budgeting a certain amount year after year, but with fewer wet, as, snow events, we won't be paying that operational cost. Does that mean then that is savings because we won't be paying it?
Through the Chair, Counselor Santos, there would be savings on the operating side of things, both in terms of equipment, operating hours, as well as material usage, obviously, because you wouldn't be using salt and other materials with respect to the operations.
Great. And that, that, that makes sense. So thank you for that clarification. That being said, though, because of the unpredictability of forecast and weather and winter and everything else these days, I'm more supportive of the shorter period of time, which would be the six years versus the, the eight years. And I know that the report indicates that there is, you know, approximately a hundred thousand dollars, I think, a year of savings if, if we go with a longer period of time. But based on this conversation and still some anxiety around what happened last term, where we were locked into a seven-year contract, I, I cannot justify going to eight years when we were highly critical of the seven years. So I, I will support the, the six years for sure unless some of my colleagues can convince me otherwise.
We have Counselor Tor on the board.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. We've had multiple discussions with staff about this. And we did give direction to get the windrow removal service and the sidewalk cleaning service. That's something that came up in my election campaign, based on promises made by my predecessor to the, to the wards. And it's repeatedly come up again and again because that's, you know, I think an expectation set too high for the residents regarding the windrow removal service. So I believe we have come back with the costs. All of that breakdown is, is part of this report. And what I would, what I would like to do is we're supposed to pick today one of the options on how long of a term we decide. But alongside that, I would also say if, if we can work with our communication staff to get out that information about the windrow removal service and the sidewalk clearing service on how much that cost is, if we can get that information out broadly across the city to the residents, I definitely want it for my residents in Morrison and Ten, for them to have that information and to be able to survey them and, and see if there is still that interest, realizing how much it costs and how much it translates into property tax increase so that the public can have that opportunity to weigh so that the public can have that opportunity to weigh the cost versus the service, you know, argument to have the service or not. And since we already, you know, have the pricing, everything else for that, if, you know, the public overwhelmingly supports the idea of having windrow removal service or sidewalk clearing service, then maybe at a later time, we amend the contract and add those services on. And if we don't hear that, then we just go forward with our current services as they're highlighted here. So I'd like staff to come over the plan to see how we can get this information out readily available to public and to survey them and get those results back to us and at council.
Councilor Tor, I think that's a helpful suggestion. We did see in the town hall that the, based on the cost of this service, the opposition was overwhelmingly against adding it when they realized how significant the cost was. I would say cities that have the service have expressed to Brampton the extreme amount of headaches they have with it. But I think we should share all this information with the public, and I'm sure corporate communications could send out flyer, maybe with a QR code where residents could quickly offer their feedback. And, you know, we proceed today with the winter maintenance without this service, but if for some reason we had feedback that was very clearly the other direction, the council could revisit. And so I see a nod from our Commissioner of Corporate Services, that's something we could put together a flyer with a QR code where you could have submissions and not just limited to nine and 10. I think it would be important to have that feedback for the entire city.
I agree with those comments, Mr. Mayor. Also additionally, just to follow up on the last comment that Councilor Santos made in terms of how many year term we need to move forward with. I'm personally comfortable with a six or an eight-year term, not a 10-year term, definitely. But the only reason I say six or eight, I do prefer the six-year term. You know, doing some quick math, when the six-year term will be expiring, it will be election year again. And I think it just puts council at that time, whatever council there is at that time, in a sort of a difficult spot going into election year and also negotiating a snow removal contract. And that's why that's, to me, that's not ideal. I wish that was a five-year term or a seven-year term option. I would rather go with one of those. But I'm in favor of a shorter term versus a longer term. The difference is, in my opinion, the difference is a marginal difference when you look at the overall contract. I think these numbers are still better than what we expected. We expected much higher numbers, and I think we're still doing okay. A shorter term is preferred because we don't know what the future holds in terms of snowfall. It's become more and more unpredictable. We could have even more snowfall than we've ever seen, or we could barely have any like we saw this last winter. So a shorter term would be preferred so that whenever it expires, there's an opportunity to look at how we need to adapt to whatever climate we face in the future.
Councilor Tor, we have the CEO wishing to respond to your comment.
Thank you, Mayor, to Councilor Tor. Staff looked at the options and, as explained earlier, our contract is now set up so that we can exit anytime we want. We also have more liquidated damages, more inspection of services. But the cost is going to be more than just $100,000 a year. If we go with six and then we have to go back out again, it's going to come back in a lot more expensive than what we're getting right now because we got some really good prices. So staff may not, would be looking at the 10, but happy with the eight.
Thank you for that comment, CEO Calladine. Yeah, I'll still stick by my comment that I'm in favor of the six-year term and an eight-year term, more towards the six-year term, just so that we can come back again in the future. Whatever council is there at that time has that opportunity to negotiate again. Thank you.
So I think what the CEO is saying is that we have an exit clause this time that we did not have under the previous contract. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just on that point, if you can give some more clarification, please, on that exit clause? Because my understanding was that you can't just exit the contract. It would be based on performance. If we're not seeing service levels or service quality that we expect, or based on a number of complaints, can you tell me how that works? Like, if we're signed up in an eight-year contract, and let's say year six, year seven, we want to get outfit, what, how do we make that decision?
Through the Chair to Councilor Tor, so the new contract does have two termination provisions. So one is a termination for convenience, where the owner, being the city, can terminate when it's in their best interest. And there is another termination clause with respect to, you know, performance or default by the contractor. So theoretically speaking, if, you know, we're in that position, you know, more than likely we'll fall under that second provision because we're having issues with the contractor. But there is also another termination clause in there that the city could leverage.
So at that point, Commissioner, the first clause and the one for convenience, I'm assuming there's associated penalties. You can't just walk within the contract, right?
So through the Chair to Councilor Tor, you can terminate if, as the owner, there are certain reasons. It does become a little bit more complex than exiting by simply not exercising the option years. So that's where going with, say, the eight-year with two option years would help facilitate that. And I did just want to provide one clarification with respect to the recommendation in the report that deals with the term. It's under recommendation number two. The three options there are presented. I just want to point out that the third option, which is the 10-year fixed term, as mentioned, does result in the lowest annual cost at just under 20 million. However, scenario two, which is the eight-year term with the option to renew for two more years, is $100,000 more a year. So for $100,000 more a year, we do have that ability to, you know, terminate or exit the contract at the eight-year mark. So it provides that flexibility, and you wouldn't have to exercise those termination clauses that I just referenced. But what I wanted to point out is the six-year term is considerably more costly, at a difference of almost $880,000 annually. So if we were to go with that six-year term and the performance of the contractor was good, we'd be paying, you know, $880,000 extra every year for, you know, 10 years potentially if we exercised the option years. And even if we terminated the contract at six years, we'd be looking at almost, you know, $6 million in additional costs to have that ability to opt out at six years. So I just wanted to point that out to the members of council.
Tor, Commissioner, I don't think we got the answer I was looking for, or maybe I didn't understand it correctly. But for termination of a contract by convenience, what makes it complex? Like, that's what I'm trying to get to. Like, how does it work? What grounds do we have if, like, year six, year seven, we want to get a contract for whatever reason at that time? What is the complexity to it?
So through the Chair to Councilor Tor, I can defer to legal services. But what I would say is the way the clause is set up right now, it basically says that the city does have the right to terminate the contract if it's in its best interest upon giving written notice to the contractor. What I would suggest could be, could make that a little complex is if the contractor disagreed and if they were to argue the point. But I'll defer to legal services for further comment.
Through the Chair, I don't have the details of the contract in front of me, so I'd have to get a copy of that to be able to comment.
Okay, Councilor Tor, you still have the floor, followed by Councilor Paleshi and Councilor Singh.
Yeah, so sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, whenever we get that answer back, I'd like to hear that. And if it is under contract and if we're getting legal advice about it, then I would suggest we do it in closed session then. And just on that part, if that makes it better, because again, I don't want that to be out in the public on what makes it complex. But I'd like that answer back before we make that decision today. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Tor, thank you, followed by Councilor Paleshi.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I think I'm hearing from members of council, and I certainly support a shorter term just because of the unknown. And as Councilor Santos had mentioned, the issues that we had with the last contract. But that all being said, I can't justify going with a six with all of that added cost, added money being left on the table. Would love to see an option A-B with maybe a seven to try and find that in-between ground. But as of right now, I can't support a six. I'd have to go with an eight is the only thing that I personally could support. And even though the 10 is a less cost, I think that sweet spot right now for me is certainly eight. You know, almost $6 million is a lot of money, especially in the days, you know, what we're living in today. So, but I also like where Councilor Tor was going with the communications and am really interested in looking at, you know, how we get those questions out to the public and get a response rate, a significant response rate from the community to hear what they would like us to do on the windrows and the sidewalks, for sure. So I look forward to anything that Communications will be coming back with to get the word out. But as of right now, I'm happy to move in camera and listen to what has to be said legal. But as of right now, I think I'm stuck on the eight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think I share Councilor Paleshi's sentiments on this. Counselor, I was incorrect. I missed the board we have here with the clerk. We have Councilor Visante in power before Deputy Mayor Singh. Councilor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank members of council for giving a lot of feedback on this file and to staff for taking it all in and trying to come up with a contract that will satisfy the needs of the residents. I'm really satisfied with the work that staff has done in terms of putting in checks and balances to make sure that the quality of the service that we have been demanding over the past two terms, really, will come to fruition and that our residents will be better served with the more frequent plowing, the earlier plowing, et cetera. And then having those inspections is really key because if we can catch deficiencies in the service level before residents make the call to us, that is super important. And so we really need to make sure that we have those resources in place to ensure that wherever possible, we catch those deficiencies as early as possible. I know there is a lot of trepidation here among most of us with going with the longer term. We battled with the idea that we were locked into a seven-year term for such a long time. And so that is very present in our minds. And we don't want to make, shall we say, the same mistake again. But the numbers don't lie in that if we choose the six-year versus the eight-year, there is a substantial savings when we choose to go with the eight-year. So my personal preference in looking just at the numbers is that we choose the eight-year term. But I would be satisfied and have greater assurance, as members of council have shared here today, if we have that six-year term, we may be more comfortable with that. And so my proposal would be that perhaps after we've gone through all the comments, we put the two options to a vote. We know that it's not going to be the 10-year. That's not going to be on the table today. And so it would be for, as is in the report, option A to be the preferred option here of this council without the provisional services being added in. And so that would be, I think, the approach that we could take here today. Thank you.
Wait, Councilor Power.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. With option two or option B, the eight-year term, can we look at a possible two-year renewal option? Or is it fixed on the one-year renewable option?
So through the Chair to Councilor Power, the eight-year fixed includes a two-year renewal option? One two-year renewal option. So it typically takes, you know, to put out a call document and give contractors sufficient time. Ideally, we want to leave a little bit more time, so that's why we have the two-year time period. So it's one option that's exercised for a two-year period.
I think I'd be in favor of the option B, the eight-year. I don't know if we can justify an extra $6 million.
Deputy Mayor Singh.
So when I entered in 2014, there was a lot of discussion about the winter maintenance contract. And a lot of residents were concerned, and we were definitely handcuffed. And the whole goal was this time to make sure we're not handcuffed. And so it's interesting because we're potentially looking at introducing a clause, which would obviously have legal implications. But my question is more about process and how this was done. So who actually negotiated this contract?
So through the Chair to the Deputy Mayor, there was no negotiation. The RFP went out, and the bidders just bid on these three different scenarios.
So how was the clause introduced? Who's idea was that? Was that the vendors themselves bringing up, we're going to introduce a clause? Or did we ask for a clause? How did that introduce?
Sorry, through the Chair, just a clarification. Which clause, the termination clause?
The clause you were talking about that we can get, termination clause?
Just through discussions with our legal team and procurement, we wanted to have a clause in there in the event that we wanted to exit a contract earlier. We'd have some language there that we could rely on to do that.
Our legal team, okay. But when we were asked for legal advice, I just heard, we haven't seen the contract. So who were we talking to for the legal team then?
So through the Chair, before the call document went out, it was reviewed by legal services. I think perhaps it's not in front of us right now, but we'll certainly get back with respect to that.
Yeah, okay. Because legal advice is important. Because if we're saying we can get a contract, we better be able to get a contract. And for that, we do need some serious legal advice. So I hope, whether with inside council or outside council, they were definitely involved. Because, you know, we're saying things, but if we can't execute them down the line, that's going to be a real, real problem. So I'll look forward to the legal advice.
And I should note, I believe that came from council too, wanting to have greater frustration in the last clause. I know, at least I spoke to that, I believe, Councilor Visante, you did too, that we wanted to have a greater ability to exit if there was challenges. And so I think that might have been, we've had this discussion many times. I know it's easier to forget which discussions we have, but I believe that was something that was feedback from council. Counselor Brar, followed by Councilor Visante.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just had one question regarding the termination. So are we going to be blinded by the guidelines when it's going to be considered to be inadequate services? Or is there going to be a guideline that we're going to be following to be considered inadequate to exit the contract? And what those guidelines would look like?
Sorry, through the Chair to Counselor Brar, at the end of each winter season and throughout the season, there are vendor performance throughout the season, there are vendor performance evaluations that are conducted, and we conduct those in an effort to, if there are performance issues, to ensure that we address them in a timely manner. If in the event that the performance is not improved, we would then be able to rely on those evaluations and be able to terminate the contract based on contractor performance.
Okay. So looking at, I guess, when I'm looking around the room, looking at my colleagues, we're really looking at between six and eight, but also looking at the cost of living that, you know, the cost is rising. We still do need a balance between the services and making sure that we're not, you know, taxpayers are not paying so much that it's not affordable. But at the same time, that it's important that we're able to opt out if they're not performing well. I think that's the biggest, most important factor here, so.
Thank you. And through the chair to Counselor Brar, I just want to be clear that if there is performance issues with the contractor, under the provisions in the contract, we would have the ability to terminate the contractor based on the contractor performance or lack thereof.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So again, as we go around and listen to the different opinions, perhaps there is a strong consensus for the eight-year term without the additional provisional services. So I would recommend that we move, that we put that to a vote here by council for us to support the eight-year term, no additional provisional services, and that staff undertake to execute on a campaign to share information with members of the public across the city on the rationale and thinking around this new contract that the city will undertake to put in place and provide services for the residents. I hope the clerk can capture the spirit of that, and we can finally make a decision here. Thank you, members.
Okay, and I believe there are some in-camera questions. So we have the motion on the floor, but we'll hold it down until the in-camera questions can be asked. We also have Counselor Santos on the board.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. That was my question, and I believe someone had asked questions that we needed advice in camera. So I think putting the motion forward right now until we get that advice and that information might be slightly inappropriate, but we could, I'm about to go into Agent Heritage Month with Peel Regional Police, so I will be able to vote if a voting thing happens right now and if we don't vote in camera.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Santos. Counselor Tor, followed by Counselor Pelashy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that's correct, that we're going to vote on this after we have a discussion in closed session. I was just going to add a friendly change to what Counselor Visante put forward is, I don't want the language to say we're not going ahead with additional services. The language should be that we're looking at that option and based on public feedback because we're not saying no to that today. There's a possibility that to come back, or there's a possibility we could say no to that in the future, but that's not concrete today because I don't want that to be the word out that we already made the decision we're not going ahead and we're still asking the public the questions. It's not fair to the public then. So if we leave that open, and then when public comes back with a yes or a no, we go based on that. Thank you.
Good suggestion, Counselor Tor. That language will be adjusted. Counselor Pelashy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I lost audio, so if I'm saying anything that somebody else had already mentioned, I apologize. I came back when Counselor Visante moved motion, and so in listening to the discussion, that's out of order. Counselor Santos already moved the six-year, but that was prior to us having questions that needed to be answered in camera. So I'm not sure where we stand with that and what we're voting on first, as far as I understand. Counselor Santos moved the six-year, so that would be the first vote.
Yeah, point of order. Sorry, Counselor Pelashy, I did not move a motion for the six-year. I said that I would support a six-year and that I wanted to listen to other counselors and what they had to share in order to change my mind.
Okay. Yeah, your wording was you were putting forward the six-year.
No, I said that I would support it, but I would like to hear from my colleagues first in order to change my mind.
Okay. No, your wording was you were putting forward the six-year, but yes, you did say that you wanted to hear other counselors to see if they changed your mind. So just for perspective.
Counselor Pelashy, the clerks are saying that they didn't take that as a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as for the opt-out, and it was this council that asked for that condition to be in there based off of the discussions that we're having with the issues, the issues that we were having. So that wasn't staff, that wasn't legal, that was council that had asked for that. So I wanted that to be clear as well. And then as for the next step, Mr. Mayor, if you can clarify when we'll be going in camera and when this vote will be occurred.
We have a relatively short agenda today, so hopefully we can finish the agenda and then go in camera. Oh, the CEO would like to speak to this and the city solicitor. So to the CEO first and then the city solicitor?
Through the mayor, I was just going to say that Legal is ready to speak on this issue now. Without going on camera.
Okay, so to the city solicitor.
Through the chair, just to clarify, I didn't intend to convey that Legal has not looked at the contract. I just didn't have the contract in front of me. But I do have confirmation, and I have looked at the provisions. It's a pretty standard termination for convenience provision, which requires the city to pay all reasonable costs up to the date of termination. So what those costs are will have to be determined at the time, which is what creates the complexity. But if the city is terminating for convenience, there would be costs incurred by the contractor to that date that the city would bear.
And on that note, is this the strongest possible language we can have to give us the ability to terminate?
Through the chair, that's a difficult question to answer, particularly in open session, whether it's the strongest possible language. But I mean, we could always have stronger language, but this is reasonable language, and it protects the interests of the city and is, I would say, commercially reasonable as well.
And reflects the wishes of what council asked for.
That's right.
Okay. I would say, given the nature, given the fact that the city solicitor said he's happy to answer these questions in public, do we still have a desire to go in camera? Seeing no in the room. Counselor Tor?
Yeah, I do have more questions. I'm just, I'm hesitating to ask them in public, so I would say we go on camera for those. But they're based on the answers that I've just heard from the faceless.
Okay. Counselor Santos? Your hand is still up?
Yeah, thank you. I just want folks to know that I have to sign off between 11:00 and 12:00. So I may be potentially missing that in-camera discussion as well as the vote, unfortunately. And ultimately, because it's the mayor's budget, I will, you know, follow whatever the mayor would recommend on this.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. Counselor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just point out that there isn't a secondary yet for the motion yet, but if we need to go on camera, that is certainly good, and I'm ready for us to go on camera and get additional advice if needed before we have any vote.
Okay, great. So there's a desire to still go on camera on this, so we'll hold this down until we complete the, do we need a motion to be able to?
Through you, Mayor Brown. We'll have to reopen the agenda under two-thirds to add this as an item 19.3, closed session, and the city solicitor can provide the reasoning, and we will need a secondary for the motion.
Just taking a moment just to, the city solicitor, to see if it meets the threshold to go on camera.
Through you, Mayor Brown. In the meantime, perhaps we can identify a secondary for the motion.
Secondary, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Singh.
Thank you.
To the city solicitor?
Through the chair, we can go into, we can go into closed session for legal advice.
Okay, we're going into closed session for legal advice. We'll do so once we finish the agenda, and that way we, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. That's added item 19.3.
Okay. Item 13.3 is the request from Regional Counselor Pelashy, services for the Environmental Education Center.
Through you, Mayor Brown. We have to circle back to the beginning of the agenda with the delegations.
Oh, sure, yes, of course, yeah.
So we're actually at 7.1, which is the staff presentation regarding the e-scooter pilot program update.
Of course, yes.
So good morning, Mr. Mayor, counselors, staff colleagues, and guests in the gallery. I just wanted to take a very brief moment. My name is Henrik Zbogar, and as Director of Integrated City Planning, I wanted to introduce to you Rija Dave. Not only is Rija Gujarati, but she's also our newest member of the transportation planning team overseeing our policy and projects. So you'll be hearing more from her as we begin to wind up our Brampton Mobility Plan later on this year. Rija's first order of business is to step into the breach and represent her colleagues, Nelson and Fernanda, whom you all know. Nelson and Fernanda couldn't be here with us in person to deliver this presentation because they're currently attending the Ontario Traffic Council Conference, where Fernanda is actually a panelist on an e-scooter discussion. The, Brampton has been a leader, I think, in kind of stepping forward and implementing this micro-mobility initiative, and Fernanda is very much being looked to as kind of an expert in that field for the GTA, and we have a lot of our colleagues in our adjacent municipalities looking to get that information from us, so that's a very good news story. So I'll let Rija take the stand here, just to let you know as well that Rija does come to us from previously at the Region Appeal and most recently in Metrolinks, so we're very happy to have her on board. And Rija, I'll leave it to you to deliver on behalf of your colleagues.
Thanks, Henrik, and thank you, council, and good morning. Like Henrik mentioned, my name is Rija Dave, and I'm here on behalf of Fernanda to kind of share some of the good work that my colleagues have been doing. The purpose of today's presentation and the associated staff report is to provide counsel sort of with a summary of the pilot's performance to date, share some of the challenges and takeaways after completing one full season, share some of the adjustments that staff is making to this year's operations in order to improve the program. Next slide, please. In its first season, which spanned from April 3rd to November 12th last year, there were approximately 200,000 trips taken by 110,000 different users of the shared pilot program. The three operators, Bird, Neuron, and Scooty collectively deployed 750 e-scooters per day on average and covered over 415,000 kilometers traveled. Each operator has its own deployment strategy for balancing the supply of e-scooters throughout the city based on their business models and demand, but deployments are usually focused in parks, transit corridors, mobility hubs, and other popular destinations like downtown Brampton, recreation centers, community centers, libraries, and community amenities. Next slide, please. The graphs on this slide demonstrate some of the key metrics that staff have been monitoring during its first season of operation, including the number of trips per month, so that's the first graph there, the total number of trips deployed per month, second graph, and the average vehicle utilization rate, which is the number of daily trips per e-scooter per day in the given month. The graph on the right shows a decrease in the average vehicle utilization as the season progressed, and staff intend to work with operators to determine the best strategy to determine, you know, that we're focusing on deploying the service in areas that support the program and also provide communities with an additional mobility option. Next slide, please. Operators reported that the most popular trips starting and ending locations were Chincuzzi Park, Professors Lake Recreation Center, Credit View Sandalwood Park, Hart Lake Conservation Area, Loafers Lake, and downtown Brampton. Data also suggests that a significant portion of the trips are taken to and from transit stations and stops, which supports the case for micro-mobility as a viable, sustainable mode to address that first and last mile transit connection. Next slide, please. Throughout the year, members of the public were able to report improperly parked e-scooters and any other concerns regarding the pilot program through 3-1-1 calls as well as through the program email. With the support and collaboration of Brampton's Community Services Team, staff were able to collect and analyze this data. As shown on the table to the left, a total of 337 calls were received by 3-1-1 over the course of the 2023 season, representing an average of 11% of the overall requests received by 3-1-1 related to the categories of litter debris obstruction and sidewalk parking infractions. The table on the right shows that the number of calls or complaints per the total number of trips received throughout the course of the season remained consistently low. It's also noteworthy to report that all operators fulfilled the required response time of under one hour, averaging 30 to 45 minutes, to address issues from the public. Staff also tracked emails related to the pilot and responded to them accordingly. Many of the messages were related to parking on private property, concerns about safety. However, approximately 20% of the messages were from residents asking for additional information and/or complimenting the program by reporting their personal experiences as users. Next slide, please. While monitoring the data related to the program, staff also looked at how we could improve that issue of improper parking around the city. The original rules for parking e-scooters in Brampton required them to be parked without obstructing pedestrian travel in an upright position and locked to a fixed object. However, compliance with the lock-to-parking model was low, around 60%, prompting a trial of two alternative parking solutions, one being a designated parking model and the second being a free-floating parking model. The designated parking model requires riders to end their trips at specific parking areas, while the free-floating parking model allows riders to park anywhere within a defined area without needing to lock the scooter. Results showed significantly higher compliance rates with both of the alternative model trials compared to the lock-to-parking model, an increase from 60% to 95%. Next slide, please. For the 2024 season, staff will be piloting a hybrid parking model combining designated parking areas and high pedestrian traffic zones with free-floating parking elsewhere. For areas such as Chincuzzi Park, downtown Brampton, Sheridan College, Professors Lake, and others, operators will be required to set up virtual parking corals and clearly identify them within their apps to direct users to end their trips at these locations. Staff can also implement quick and easy measures like the ones shown on this slide in high-demand areas to reinforce the designated parking solution. This approach aims to address parking issues, particularly around transit terminals and high pedestrian areas, by providing clear parking instructions to users and reducing obstructions. Next slide, please. The shared e-scooter pilot program has exceeded expectations in ridership numbers, and the feedback received from the community has been positive. The significant number of rides starting and ending at transit terminals and stops indicates that the program appears to be addressing an existing transportation gap in the city by providing transit users with an alternative mode to complete their first and last mile transit connection. In a survey conducted by one of the operators, 40% of users reported using e-scooters, mostly to connect to public transit. The city of Brampton will resume the e-scooter pilot program this spring, testing the hybrid parking strategy that uses both a designated and free-floating parking model, with the commitment of continuing to prioritize active transportation and projects to build more connected communities and provide more sustainable transportation options for everyone. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time and listening to your presentation. On the line, we have Fernanda Suarez, the city's Active Transportation Project Manager, and Nelson Cadet, the city's Transportation Planning Manager, and they will be able to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Tour.
Thank you for you, Deputy Mayor Singh. This is a really good report. I'm so happy to see the numbers that we got back from the first year of this pilot program that's citywide. It's very encouraging to see people use this mode of transportation, especially like if I'm not mistaken, I see where, when I was looking at the darker areas where the used city was, I'm assuming it's a lot to go to the gold station and to transit routes. So it's a great option that our residents are having and they're enjoying this. I've got tons of positive feedback in awards nine to ten every time I go out about the scooters. At first, I remember when in March and April, a lot of people were a little bit anxious about it, especially seeing kids, you know, enjoy riding it around the parks. But, you know, as people got more open to the idea, it's been really well received and welcomed in the area. So super happy to see that. Just a couple of questions on this. One, I wish that we came back on this sooner because last month of April, even in fact in March, the weather was fantastic. I think we only had one date probably where you couldn't have rode a scooter out in public. Some would argue you could do it that day too. But I wish we were able to relaunch the second year earlier, either in May or March or April. So that's just one, which is sort of a comment on that, which wasn't in May, like in the story today. And where do we go after the second year pilot is done? Like, how are we moving forward beyond that? Like, what are our thoughts in the future of this and how we're expanding it?
Through the chair to councillor Tour. I'll answer the first question, then I'll pass it on to Nelson or to Fernanda, who are online, who can speak to the future plans. With respect to the timing of the launch this year, staff had really, we had hoped to launch it sooner as well. For a number of reasons, I think we were exercising a bit of an overabundance of caution. We wanted to inform yourselves as council before we kind of move forward with some of the proposed modifications to the program, just to make sure that you all had the information about the upcoming program, you know, to be able to respond to questions that may be coming from your constituents. So we are, we are hoping that, and I know in talking to our vendors, who are just as eager to get out there and get their fleets deployed, that we can begin that as of today, that we launch that. So, yes, unfortunately, I think we, we've lost, you know, a great opening potential month. But I think everybody's ready to go. And, you know, with council's blessing, I guess, you know, we are ready to do so today. Nelson or Fernanda, I'm hoping that you can address the term of the pilot beyond the two years.
Sure, I can take that, Henrik. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me well?
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Thank you, councillor. So in regards to the duration of the pilot, our contract with operators ends by the end of this season in November, as well as the current provincial pilot that we are operating under. So we, we have reported on our first season to MTO. So that's the agreement with municipalities that decided to take part of the provincial pilot. So we reported back our last year, and we're going to do the same with the second season. Everything indicates that the province will extend the pilot for at least more two years, additional two years, because a lot of municipalities just started their program this year and didn't have a chance to gather enough data to evaluate their programs. So we are anticipating that the ministry will extend this pilot further. And once they do that, we can have a definition on how we are going to proceed as a municipality. We will keep reporting back to seek direction on future solution in the pilot environment if the province decides to do so, as well as if this turns out to be a permanent problem in the future. So we are expecting a decision on the province first to then make that recommendation.
And again, through the, through the chair to councillor Tour as well. Yeah, I think, you know, Brampton has the benefit, will have had the benefit of two years of actual experience under wraps by the end of this year. And I think, I stand to be corrected by Fernanda if need be. But, you know, even with the provincial pilot continuing kind of that umbrella, it doesn't preclude us from implementing this program on a permanent basis going forward. Under the provincial pilot, it's really just a, it's more of a data collection exercise for the province to be able to see how these programs are working elsewhere. As I mentioned before, I mean, Brampton has been a leader in this. The city of Toronto is right now contemplating, they're reevaluating a decision they'd made years ago not to allow scooters. They're now looking to the experience here in Brampton to actually deploy their own program as well. So I think that bodes well, but staff will be reporting again towards the end of the year with a strategy for moving forward beyond the currently approved city pilot.
Thank you, Henrik and Fernanda. Just some follow-up questions on that. So if I understood that correctly, we can go beyond the two years. Let's say in a case where the province doesn't go on with the pilot, or even if they do, we're still able to, like, we have the ability as a municipality to decide that we can make this as a permanent thing citywide and, of course, within the rules of regulations. But we're able to do that then beyond the second, beyond the end of the second year, right?
That's correct.
And did you say you will come back to us later this year around that? To see if we want to enter into another pilot or if we want to go ahead with our own program?
Yes, so the season is supposed to end by November, weather permitting. We don't have a hard date for the end of the season, but that's the idea. So by the end of the season, we'll have collected all the data for season two and can make those comparisons and evaluation and report back to council.
Through the chair to councillor Tour, what we can do here too is, I mean, we will be reporting back at the end of the year regardless. But I think a strategy for moving forward is something that can also be baked into the Brampton Mobility Plan, which will also be rolled out around that time, so we can package that all together.
I believe that would be appropriate, Henrik, and thank you for that. And also, it wasn't a, sorry, it wasn't a criticism when I said earlier that, you know, we should have started earlier. That was just me mourning the loss of an opportunity there. But I'm happy to see staff feel the same way as well. Also, one question was about, right now we have seven hundred and fifty scooters across the city. What's the, according to our data that we've got, like, are these scooters being well-used in terms of the quantity of scooters and seven hundred and fifty? Or is there an opportunity to have more of these? Like, is there a demand to have more scooters available on the road?
Through the chair to councillor Tour, I'll let Fernanda answer in detail. But I think I do recall that in the provisions of the pilot project, there was an opportunity for vendors to request additional deployment of scooters. And I think we had done that through the initial pilot, reflecting kind of that demand. But I'll let, I'll let Fernanda speak to in greater detail.
Yeah, thank you, Henrik. So, yeah, under our contract, the number of vehicles in a season can be anywhere between two fifty and five hundred scooters per operator. In the permit for this year, in our agreement, we agreed to start with three hundred vehicles for each operator. And they always have a chance to, we require the deployment of more vehicles based on data and solid justification to do so. Just because we want to, we want to make sure to be serving all communities and have an equitable distribution of this mode of transportation across the city. So given data justification, this number can go up.
Okay, that makes sense. And regarding the parking compliance for the scooters, if we can just go back to that slide, please. Parking model slide. Or the one where that showed the compliance figures?
Yeah, I believe it's before this one.
Yeah, so when you see that low compliance rate of sixty percent for the lock-to-parking model, my understanding was at least from one scooter company that if you don't lock or park, that you're not able to end your trip. Like, what happens in this case? Like, right now, like, when we have that model going on, when somebody is non-compliant, what really happens?
So, yeah, our low compliance rate to the, for the lock-to-model, what we received, information we received from operators themselves was that, first, unfortunately, the city didn't supply many infrastructure to lock to. So we don't have enough bike racks, for example, to help or to support this parking model. So that was an issue. And operators, and I can defer to them, and I know they are there to delegate and can answer a battery of questions in terms of the technology, they have a way of monitoring compliance because users at the end of their trips have to take a picture of the parked scooter to send it back. And I believe also the Bluetooth that connects the locks were able to give them feedback on that compliance rate. So this is where we get the data from. Just to give you an example, Hamilton, which also implemented the lock-to-parking model, has a higher compliance rate. And that's because Hamilton invested in installing a lot of infrastructure to support this parking model. But we couldn't done that, I guess. The investment in the infrastructure and the pilot didn't seem the right approach for us at that time. But with our parking trial that we did during the last season, we could see ninety-five, ninety-seven percent, as you can see here on the slide, of compliance rate. So really increasing with this type of parking model. And that's why we decided to give it a shot this season. And I believe we will improve compliance moving forward.
Okay, what I'd like to see is that later this year, when that report comes back again to us, I want to see how we can, the lock, like, in my opinion, the lock-to-parking model is the best model. Sadly, it has a very low compliance rate right now. But what can we do to improve that compliance rate? Like you just mentioned, having the infrastructure, but also what are the costs associated with that? And what are the pros and cons of doing such an investment across the city? I'd like to see that so that whenever we get out of a pilot mode and act, and just fully implement e-scooters across the city, I'd like to have the best strategy going forward for that because that's the point of the pilot, we're testing different things out. But I'd like to make a decision at that point. And could you just quickly explain the difference between the free-flow parking and the designated parking? You have some confusion around that too. And the confusion came from the next slide where you have the pictures of the designated parking area. So if you can just let me know what these two models are and how they're different from each other.
Sure, sure, councillor. So the designated parking strategy relies on operators indicating within their mobile apps exactly where people have to end their trips. So, but this is going to be implemented for the high pedestrian traffic areas. So people will, on these areas, only be able to return their scooters and their trip if they choose to park on one of the parking spots shown in the app. The pictures we have here are suggestions about what we can do to support even more this strategy. We do not necessarily need maps or parking markings as we see here in those pictures, but this really can support the parking strategy. But they are called by operators as virtual parking spots, basically, because people are going to be able to see in the app and then end their trip wherever is indicated in the app. The free-floating is different. So in the more residential areas or suburban areas of the city where you don't have a high pedestrian traffic, people are going to be able to end their trips basically anywhere within the boulevard, but not obstructing the sidewalks. So they're going to be parking their scooters in the furniture zone or the strip where we don't have people walking, where we have to keep it clear for pedestrians. And that gives them the flexibility of parking them anywhere. So it basically means that people won't have to be locking their scooters when they end their rides on these areas where we're going to carry the free-floating model.
Okay, that gives me clarity. We were just this past weekend, or actually on Monday, in Ottawa, and we got the chance to go around the scooters there to across the city. And they have a designated parking model. And they don't have the markings on the ground like that. But like you said, we have the virtual spots. And if you don't leave it in that spot, like, within that designated area, it doesn't allow you to end your ride. So they did have hotspots on where they needed to, where people needed to leave their scooters. And I, in my opinion, that works really well in Ottawa. There wasn't that much, I would say, the street clutter of the scooters. Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Fernanda. And I look forward to seeing how this works out in this pilot this year and how we move forward. But super supportive of this entire idea here. And when we have that opportunity at the end of the year to see how we move past this pilot, please keep me in the loop, and I look forward to that. Thank you once again.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. I also see councillor Pror on the board.
Thank you through you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. Deputy Mayor. So I was thinking, when we think about road safety, for example, I know on our report it says we had very low rates of calls and complaints per number of trips. It's important being proactive and having a strategy to make sure these numbers stay low. So my question is around how are we talking to our, maybe our instructor, our driver instructors or our driver schools where we are kind of educating others how we can share the road with e-scooters? And I think it's important to have a strategy plan because when I'm looking at the takeaways, how do we implement that to make sure that it stays safe?
That's a very good point. And, you know, as far as the inclusion of kind of this kind of awareness in driving instruction, I haven't taken driving lessons in a few years. But I'm aware that certainly, you know, as cycling for one has become, you know, a lot more prominent mode of transportation, that that kind of instruction is kind of built into those, into those programs. It's certainly something I could take away, unless Fernanda or Nelson have any more information on to what degree the e-scooters. Now, again, the e-scooters are kind of a newer presence for us. You know, they're, municipalities have been dealing with them in some way, shape, or form for a number of years, actually. But those are the private ones. We, you know, with the, with the shared e-scooter program, it's a little bit different. I think that the operators are really stepping up to the plate in this regard as well because when you're introduced, when you first take out one of these scooters, there is kind of a process that you have to go through, kind of a very rudimentary, fundamental kind of safety kind of lesson. So that's on the scooter point of view. And I think you're really talking about kind of the driver awareness point of view. So, you know, similar to the, some of the issues that we've been discussing around, you know, cycling and that interplay. But, you know, as far as working with strategic communications to put out those kinds of awareness programs and notifications, I think that's something that we maybe have been doing. But again, maybe I can pass it off to Fernanda and Nelson may have some more information on that too.
Thank you. And I think, so I think you were talking about that when you first sign on to e-scooter, there's a little maybe tutorial of what you should and shouldn't be doing as a resident who will be driving an e-scooter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. And I just, I was kind of looking at the statistics. I want to see, do we have a majority, what majority of age groups are using the scooter, e-scooter? do we have a majority, what majority of age groups are using the scooter, e-scooter?
That's a great question, and, um, I don't know whether that data is collected that, to that level, but Fernando, would you be able to answer that?
Uh, partially, I guess, councillor. Uh, so operators tend to, uh, uh, conduct a survey, uh, by the end of the season, and maybe they can answer better, because each of them have their own way of collecting data and have some statistics on that. Uh, so these are surveys that, uh, users answer to voluntarily, uh, and they have some information, uh, in regards to that.
Okay, thank you.
I also see councillor Plushy, then councillor Power.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I guess I'll start by saying, you know, I'm, I'm really looking forward to the next, uh, two years of this, of this pilot. Um, you know, as a, as a politician, uh, one of our jobs is definitely to, uh, resolve and listen to complaints from residents, and if that's telephone calls, emails, or even being stopped at grocery store. Um, and one of the complaints on this definitely was the e-scooters being left on private property, um, or in front of businesses. And I think, uh, I think staff, first of all, have done a remarkable job on, um, trying to have the foresight to resolve any of the potential issues that, um, um, that could be coming forward over the next two years. And just wanna thank staff for the amount of work that they did and, and reach an amazing, amazing job. Um, and I, I, I think that the vendors are, are delegating on this too as well. Um, and so I would like to say to, to the vendors, as I'm sure they're, they're listening, um, you're gonna be partners with us in the city of Brampton. Um, I don't want scooters being left on private property or in front of businesses or, um, impeding anybody's way of life. So I want us to really work together on how we, um, ensure that this doesn't happen going forward and have a game plan at the city, um, to make sure that if, you know, people are, are leaving these scooters on people's front lawns or in front of businesses, that we have a way of get, of removing them, um, as soon as possible, um, to ensure that, you know, this isn't an issue going forward. We need to, you know, all work together on this, and I, I think that this is something, it's something new, it's something different, and, and it's exciting. Um, I'm glad to see it and fully support it. Um, just wanna make sure that, uh, that we, we make sure that there isn't issues as the best of our abilities. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Power.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, just a quick question. Yesterday, we saw in the city of Toronto, um, someone killed on an e-bike. Uh, and that was the, the fault of the person on the e-bike, not the driver. Um, what, when we talk about tutorials, can you clarify for me? Or maybe it has been clarified and I didn't hear it. Are these tutorials mandatory? Or is there a way to skip past the tutorial and just jump on these scooters and go? Can we make them locked so they have to go through the tutorial to make sure they're safe? Because it's, it's one thing to sit there and point at vehicle traffic and say vehicles aren't operating safely, but when we look at bikes and we look at e-bikes and scooters, are they being operated safely as well? We have to have education both ways. I know for a fact from the G-one and G-two testing, there is nothing in there about e-scooters or bicycles or bike lanes or anything else. So unless you're taking a privatized driving instruction, you're probably not getting anything about rules of the road when it comes to e-scooters, bikes, or e-bikes.
Um, for the, with regards to the, the tutorials and the scooters and all of that, and that technology, maybe if I, if you'll allow for the, maybe the vendors can actually speak to that, uh, because they may be different, uh, in, in their, in their different approaches.
Thank you. Um, I see another question from councillor Plushy, or is that from before?
No, my apologies, oh, I'm in the room.
No problem. Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, we'll move on to the delegation that take everything together.
Sure.
Okay, um, so we have four delegations. We'll start with, um, Austin Spadman of Bird Canada. You have five minutes. Okay, Austin, can you hear us online? Yep, you, you have five minutes, you can begin.
Okay, hey, everybody, my name is Austin Spadman. I'm the head of government relations for Bird Canada. Um, just actually on the topic of that, uh, tragic e-bike incident yesterday, I, I happened to sit on the residents' association in the area where that happened. And as to my knowledge, as of right now, fault hasn't been determined for the incident. But for shared electric scooter programs, what's really great in terms of safety is that there are rules that are enforced through mandatory rider training, as we've discussed. But moreover, the, the devices have an awful lot of, uh, technology within them, uh, and it, of course, varies from provider to provider, but, uh, that automatically enforce the rules and regulations set out, uh, by, by the municipality. So, uh, you know, that's an option that you just don't get with privately owned vehicles. That is a huge benefit, I think, of the shared electric scooter program. And I think we've seen, you know, a super successful program in Brampton as outlined by city staff. And I, I don't wanna repeat information, so, you know, I think city staff have done a great job at framing up, I think, where there's areas of opportunity in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, frankly, we're very supportive of the start date on the first, which is today. Uh, we have our team sitting in, in vehicles, ready to start distributing through, through the city. Um, we're, we're, we're really hoping to get going today, because as mentioned, um, I think we've had some really nice weather that we've missed, and we're just super excited to get started. The only thing I would actually point out, um, that I think is, is a topic, uh, of thought into twenty twenty-four is the right sizing, uh, of the amount of devices, uh, within Brampton. So, you know, a lot of, uh, historically, the industry was run with, uh, you know, more scooters equals better. Um, but across Canada, what we've actually seen is that sometimes, uh, too many scooters are what leads to potential friction with regards to, uh, parking and compliance issues in cities. And, and it's more of a, a topic for thought that, you know, yes, if there is clear demand, fleets should be increased, but the, the opposite is also true too. Based on our ridership and density information and, and baselining across Canada, we actually think two fifty scooters per provider was, you know, kind of a right-sized fleet. And so, you know, it's something to monitor through this season. Um, because, you know, I do think there is a happy middle ground with the amount of devices in a municipality that both minimizes friction for residents, but provides a consistent, reliable service, uh, for our riders. So that's more of just food for thought, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer on behalf of, uh, Bird Canada.
Thank you, Austin, I don't see any questions. So we'll move on to the next, uh, delegation, Isaac Ransom.
Mr., sorry, Mr.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Uh, councillor Tur.
Um, thank you for your delegation, Austin. Uh, it's amazing to see, uh, Bird, one of our partners here. Just have some questions regarding, regarding, um, your service model. Um, we definitely had a little bit of a panic when, um, we saw the news that Bird in the United States had fall for banking, and, and we know that hasn't affected Bird Canada. But part of the problem is, I guess, their, their contractor model or something like that that was going on in the, in the United States. Do we potentially have a safe and efficient here in Canada?
Um, yeah, fantastic question. Um, no, uh, Bird Canada's always done business differently, and, and as you mentioned, we are separately Canadian-owned, operated and funded. Um, so we've always had our staff as Bird Canada employees. Uh, we do not use contractors in Canada, and, and I think that's yielded fruit in terms of just really streamlined operations that have led to actually the longest micro-mobility relationships in the nation, um, looking at Calgary since twenty nineteen and Ottawa since twenty twenty. Uh, so we've, we've actually, we're the longest consistently serving operator in municipalities in, in Canada as a result of that model change. And a, a bit of a follow-up to the news, uh, you know, Bird U.S. has actually emerged from bankruptcy and, uh, has, you know, uh, through a restructuring process now Canadian leadership. So I think what you're gonna see in the future is that U.S. model adapting to more the Canadian way of doing business, which has led us to be, um, you know, incredibly successful partner with municipalities, um, in, in Canada, and that will hopefully, uh, take place stateside as well. So that's kind of an exciting update, it's not often you hear about, you know, Canadians taking over the U.S.
Councillor Tur, any more questions?
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Austin. You're right, that is a good story, when Canada fixes American problems. Um, and, uh, good luck with this year as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Austin, for your delegation. Moving on, we have a delegation from Isaac Ransom, Neuron Mobility Canada. Isaac, are you online? Isaac? And third time, Isaac Ransom.
Hello?
Oh, yeah, we, I, we can hear you very faintly.
Okay, um, I will try to speak up, can you, no?
Okay, you have five minutes, um, you may begin.
Uh, good morning, uh, my name is Isaac Ransom. I'm head of, uh, corporate affairs for Neuron Mobility Canada. Uh, appreciate you taking the time, uh, uh, to listen this morning, and hopefully, uh, my audio level is okay. Um, next slide, please. Um, so, uh, last year, what we saw was that Neuron, uh, was the e-scooter of choice in the city of Brampton. Uh, the vast majority of trips were taken on Neuron e-scooters. And, um, through that, we saw a number of, uh, interesting trends emerge, uh, very similar to what was in the council report. And of course, uh, a lot of great rider feedback, uh, on our operations in the city. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as part of our surveying in the city of Brampton last year, we went out and we asked our riders a number of questions around, uh, how they were using their devices. What we found is that there were a lot of riders that were, uh, using these to, uh, uh, give their patronage to local businesses, uh, specifically shopping, uh, entertainment, restaurants. Um, and that, uh, over one in ten of these trips would not have occurred if a Neuron e-scooter wasn't available. Uh, we know about sixty percent of the trips that were happening in Brampton resulted in a purchase, and that, uh, almost half of these trips were resulting in about a ten-dollar spend. Uh, so pretty significant with an average spend of thirty-nine dollars and a total local economic impact, uh, of approximately three-point-seven million dollars. And that we saw just over forty percent of these trips replacing a car journey. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we were very aware that there were a lot of concerns around parking in the city of Brampton last year. Uh, we went to a number of lengths to run a number of education campaigns, uh, around the rules that were in market last year, including, um, the lock-two measures that were, uh, within the regulations. Uh, we ran a campaign, uh, that created a number of unique impressions for our riders to help raise compliance. We just wanted to highlight that for you, cause you could see what that looks like in the app and that riders need to, uh, acknowledge that, uh, piece of education before they start their trip. And I would note that there is vigorous onboarding, uh, safety modules and education training. And we run a number of campaigns through the year to keep people, uh, people's education and, uh, awareness of the devices, uh, and how to use them up to date. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, one of these so-called, one of these campaigns is, uh, Road Safety Week, uh, that we ran very early on, uh, which reminded riders around the rules in Brampton, uh, with visuals, uh, of, of what these rules are as well as some, some text. Uh, and it also encouraged our riders to visit our ScootSafe Academy, which is our in-app, uh, uh, education, uh, programming, which provides riders with credits for successfully completing modules uh, on safe riding in the city of Brampton. Uh, next slide, please. Um, in addition to all the stuff that goes on in the app, we also do broad, uh, awareness. Uh, so that includes our, our local media and, uh, uh, public outreach. Um, so, you know, you'll see these headlines in some of the local online publications in Brampton throughout the season as we run these campaigns. Uh, next slide, please. And, uh, with that, I hopefully have left, uh, enough time for today, and happy to take any, uh, questions.
Thank you. I don't see any questions online or in person. So we'll move on to the next presentation, Moaz Ahmed, uh, Scooty.
Thank you very much.
Moaz, you have five minutes, thank you.
Uh, good morning to council, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and to the gallery as well, uh, and the people of Brampton with regards to the micro-mobility program. Uh, frankly, it's, it's, uh, very nice to be here for, uh, a second council. I spoke to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two council about e-scooters when the program was first brought to council and first introduced as a pilot at Chinkozi Park. Now I'm speaking to this council with the same, um, joy and, and pleasure to see that the, the program has been successful in twenty twenty-three, and we're looking forward to twenty twenty-four. Um, I, I could not begin without saying thank you to staff and Fernando and, and Nelson, who are in Niagara Falls, uh, and are now, you know, sought after, uh, for their experience and understanding about micro-mobility. To Rajah and Henrik, who are here, who have been very supportive to Scooty as we've been part of this journey with the city of Brampton, as partners for four and more years, working with councillors, working with the community. Uh, and to Sarah Cullen, the, uh, intern who's working with the city of Brampton, who received the, uh, best major research project in the Minto Award for Sustainability for the research that she did with the city of Brampton last year. So congratulations to all of them, and we, uh, continue to want to be supportive of the city and the work that staff and people in the community are doing with micro-mobility. To, um, to s- follow up on, on the questions and the comments that were brought up, uh, as well as the presentation, really, I don't have much more to say, except that Scooty has always been committed to be a partner with the city of Brampton. We've always been available to councillors and to members of the community to work together to improve micro-mobility and make it more useful and more of a benefit for the community. Uh, if we could refer back to the presentation, the slide that was showing the, uh, the different parking models that are available, and while that's being pulled up, I'll, uh, just reference the fact that Scooty has always been committed to safety through geo-fencing and through community engagement. Last year, we participated in twenty-five separate community events, working with, uh, different community organizations, with councillors, with staff, to, uh, encourage more people to be aware of micro-mobility and to really have that face-to-face interaction and give people the opportunity to try and test micro-mobility in a place where they were comfortable. We've also worked with drivers, we've also talked with, uh, different communities, groups, to see what we can do to make people more aware of micro-mobility. But we think that the best, uh, and most effective way is to frankly meet people where they're at and connect to them in as many ways as possible. So I personally would love to be able to do more than twenty-five events this year, and if there are events that councillors would like us to attend, please reach out, we will happily attend, uh, and be there for the community. With regards to, uh, road safety, obviously, there's a, there's a work that needs to be done through MTO to, um, not only make micro-mobility a part of our transportation mix, but also to make drivers aware of how micro-mobility fits in with that transportation mix. It's a challenge for a government like the province of Ontario to make adjustments to the Highway Traffic Act, to filter that down into driver training and to, uh, change the habits of drivers. That will take time, we are committed to being a part of that. We've said everything that we can say, and we'll continue to say that with MTO. We're also doing what we can through our app and through our public engagements to make sure that people understand what the expectations are of safety and what the limitations of micro-mobility are. So that we understand that people should be using these as a realistic, safe method of transportation, not necessarily as something to joyride on. The other thing that I think is, is frankly very important is our commitment to geo-fencing. Now, we don't like to rely on technology, but where technology is available, we try to use it as efficiently and effectively as possible. Uh, referencing back to the app image that was shown in the staff presentation, you can see...
There's one minute remaining.
Thank you. You can see the large number of parking zones that we've established, but slightly in the background is a large, uh, number of geo-fenced and restricted zones that we've established. If you look at a map of Brampton on our app, it seems like it's covered in pink and yellow. Those are all the geo-fenced zones the city of Brampton asked us to implement, plus geo-fen zones that we implemented on our own accord, because we think that information and safety is the most important thing that we can do as part of our partnership and our commitment to the city of Brampton. Uh, I think I'll stop there, just because we've got twenty-five seconds, but also I'd like to answer any questions that council has. And I would like to ask that we be able to deploy our e-scooters today. We do have staff, uh, ready to do that, I've got my safety boots ready, I've got my... I've got my safety boots ready, I've got my Scoody t-shirt on here, so I'm ready to go, and I think all of the companies are ready to go as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Tour, then Counselor Brown.
Thank you for your, that's what you're saying. Thank you, Moaz, for that delegation. Good to see your passion to develop this clearly, and you always advocate for this. And thank you again for your participation at the community events. Let me ask a question regarding, just to preface this, actually, earlier, last year, we had staff at work to come with an exemption for one of the roads or streets regarding a speed where we couldn't have the designated speed limit requirement met, but that was a very important connection to the Bramley Gold Station. I want, I want to thank your team for making that suggestion and advocating for that change. I think that results in that map that we earlier saw from the staff report where there's a high usage, high volume of usage around the Bramley Gold Station area. So thank you for that suggestion, but alongside that, if, my question is just a more broader question, don't need the answer for it today, but if there are suggestions like that, areas where, if you can identify gaps where we should be having scooters, but we don't because they don't meet one of the criterias, I'd like you to put that forward to staff directly, and if staff could just review those kind of comments and then come back to council. With those, we'd be happy to see how we can keep improving.
Thank you, Counselor Tour, I'd be happy to do that, and there's many aspects of mobility infrastructure that we would be pleased to provide support to staff on, whether it's from data, or bylaw changes, or recommendations that we could make based on what our riders are telling us. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Moaz. I really do appreciate you bringing up road safety, and you know, seeing that we heard about tutorials being mandatory, or, you know, going through the list and having these engagement groups, so I really appreciate that. And it really makes me feel comfortable, I think, you know, when people know that there's road safety on the list, and that's a priority, just because when we were looking at the previous slides, it's not, there weren't many complaints, but again, I guess this is a proactive approach in making sure that these complaints stay low and people stay safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We're very pleased to be able to work with the community, and I think it's very important also to showcase that we're introducing micro mobility in a largely suburban community, and for many people, they never thought that this was possible. The traditional introduction of micro mobility was lots of scooters in walkable zones, and that actually created more problems and fewer benefits than were promised. We've turned that model over on its head, and we're focusing on micro mobility that actually is first and last mile, and it's actually supportive of transit, and that's the model that we brought to the city of Brampton, that we proved last year, and we're going to expand on and improve on in this year and in future with the city if that's an opportunity given to us. Thank you.
Excellent, I think I had one more question. So the community engagement groups, are we, are they in recreation centers, or are they in schools? How does that?
At the moment, we've been focusing on community events, working through councillors' offices, so that seems to be the focus right now. We're always pleased to work with transit agencies, community amenities, and community services as well. Our commitment to working with Metrolinks was one of the first things that we intended to do as part of a micro mobility provider, because we recognize that there was a gap there, but we also recognize that there was an opportunity. And looking at the data that we shared with the city of Brampton in our staff report, pardon me, in our team report, but also the letters that we submitted to you recently, the data shows that people want to use micro mobility to get to transit, and they're using it in the, what I call, four Bramptons, you know, the Mount Pleasant area, the Castlemore area, the Springdale area, downtown, they're using those locally, but they're trying to connect to transit. We're very pleased to see that happen.
And I think the important question, why I was kind of asking about the age groups, because I remember seeing a lot of young kids, like people, residents who go to school or colleges, and I think that was a very effective way for them to be transporting from one place to another, and I think it would be great to have, you know, Scoodies connecting with colleges, other colleges, and making sure that students are aware of the road safety.
Thank you, that's a wonderful idea. We know that part of our demographic is younger riders, and we have proactively worked with Algonia University to introduce micro mobility, and introducing micro mobility safety programs is on the list of something that we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, and keep up the great work.
Good afternoon.
Counselor Santos.
Thanks so much through Mr. Mayor, and I apologize if this question was asked already before, I just tuned back in now. If you could share, and I know you're talking about road safety at the moment, could you share how the active transportation network has helped support the success of this micro mobility pilot program, and the importance of our active transportation network?
Thank you through the chair. When we first started talking in the city of Brampton, we were talking about micro mobility in a suburban community, and speaking with Nelson, he was talking about the trail network that the city of Brampton has, and how they felt that, you know, the north-south trails would be very useful to help connect people to, across the city, and then the cycling infrastructure that they were implementing on Vauden Street would also provide that east-west connection. We're very excited because the data is showing that people aren't just using the trails, they're using the multi-use trails, they're using local streets. Our heat maps conform to the grid in many cases, which means that people are using those e-scooters to get to and from places and amenities in the community. And that's a really important thing, because we don't just want this to be a leisure service on great days, we want this to be a form of transit for people to get to and from transit, but also to get to and from their local community amenities and community services. And we're very pleased to be seeing that from the data. With respect to working with active transportation, the first thing that we and active transportation always want to see is more infrastructure. And we know that there's a challenge that cities have with respect to introducing cycling infrastructure in places where traditionally there may be a lot more of the, let's just say, more share of road vehicles, or is for cars, but we also have data that's showing that in cases where active transportation infrastructure is available, more people are using it. And Active Transportation Team has shown that data using the example of the Charlotte bike lanes, they have their own data from bike use, but they also have the e-scooter use, which is reinforcing that. And we believe that there's a great opportunity for a partnership here with Active Transportation, with Brampton Transit, with Metrolinks, with other transit agencies, to show that micro mobility in a suburban community can work, and it can be part of the mobility mix, and it can be very, very effective in getting people around, because frankly, there's never going to be room for more cars. And that's where we have to make that decision. If we can't make room for more cars as the population of the city grows to a million people, they have to get around elsewhere and in other ways. And that's going to happen through transit, that's going to happen through micro mobility. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and you answered my question beautifully, thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Counselor Power?
Nope, you're off now?
Okay. I see no other questions? Oh, yeah, no other questions on the screen or in person? So do we need a motion to receive all the delegations?
We have one more delegation from Sylvia Roberts.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts, resident of Brampton. At this point, of the top 10 cities by population in Canada, the vast majority of them have, both have scooter shares, but also bike shares. If we look at the top 10 cities, we have Toronto and Montreal, we've got Vancouver, we have Calgary, we have Edmonton. Mississauga is, I believe it's this year, they're launching an e-bike program with 300 bikes, electric bikes, and they're planning to do it year-round. Hamilton has one. Winnipeg has a small thing partnered through its BIA, and so effectively, at this point, mostly it's Brampton and Ottawa that do not have bike shares. There are advantages and disadvantages to bikes and scooters. Some of the advantage of e-bikes are, they're smaller, they're portable, you can fold them up, you can take them in an elevator, easier to bring on transit, and none of those advantages are particularly relevant to the city of Brampton, because most of those benefits are for if you own them. This isn't to say that any of the scooter share companies are doing anything wrong. In fact, I believe, so Bird and Neuron, they both already are in partnership with municipalities on operating bike shares. Neuron, I believe, is in Kitchener Waterloo, and Bird, I believe, is in partnership with several, and Scoody, from what I saw on their website, they also have bike stuff on that, and I'm sure they would be happy to participate in a partnership. It's, planning staff is at capacity, it's if we want to do this, council will need to take the initiative and say, this is something we want, even if it's just, hey, can you set up a meeting where we bring in some of the vendors, and we can talk about what implementing a bike share might look like? I'm sure the companies that are already doing it will be happy to show up, because it's much easier to sell products to someone who's actually interested in hearing about the product itself. It's, the scooters have value, but it's the bike share that really makes a long-term transformational difference. Right now, it's, if you looked at the numbers, in September, for example, September should still be very good riding weather, and yet, even though they're still at their peak on the amount of bikes, they're now, at that point, they're below one ride per vehicle per day on average. And I think some of that is due to the cost, I believe, some in the report itself, it said that $5 per ride was the average, some of the rentals are up to 40 cents a minute. In Toronto, with their very successful bike share program, it's 12 cents a minute for a regular bike and 20 cents for any bike. These are very, very different numbers, and it's, young people, especially students, are a great use case for this, to help convolvent going to transit and stuff. But it's at that price range, it may be impeding the ability to actually use the stuff. In most cities that have these programs, they are looking at partnerships to help subsidize because they recognize that the advantage of subsidizing it is a significant benefit. It's, the city is adding 25,000 people a year, and we need to figure out some way to move it, if you ask Public Works. So how are you going to, if you had to accommodate 15,000 to 20,000 cars a year for the next 10 years, how are we going to make the road system work? It's physically not possible, because so many of our roads are built at two capacity. As such, we need to come up with other ways to do it. Transit is really good at that longer range trip, the average commute in Brampton is nine or 10 kilometers, and so transit's really good for that, but it's the average daily stuff that's where micro mobility shines. And with an e-bike, for example, many of them have programs where there's a rack or a basket on the front, and so if you want to go into a store, having that basket right there makes it much easier. And so instead of going on transit and having, instead of having a push cart thing, taking on transit, and hoping there's space, there's a basket that makes it much easier. So I'm a big fan of the scooter pilot, and I look for, and I would hope, that next year, when we're moving out of the pilot process, we look at having an e-bike share, a bike share, or an e-bike share as part of our further planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. I believe our planning commissioner wanted to respond to that.
Through you, Mayor Brown, not necessarily in response to the delegation from Sylvia, but rather just for council's consideration, the report you have before you today is an information report, and it was to provide information on the pilot program to date. You're hearing from certainly the discussion at council, and from the delegations, and from staff, an appetite to relaunch the pilot effective today, so we'll take that as direction from council. And I know our team has been working with Strategic Communications on a media release to, I guess, broadcast about the relaunching. Just putting that forward to council.
In the words of Counselor Plushy, launch away. Thank you for the delegation. We have a motion moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Plushy, to receive the delegations.
As well as receive the staff presentation.
And receive the staff presentation.
And the staff report.
And the staff report. All those in favor? Motion carries. Now, how many other items do we have on the agenda today? Let's see.
Through you, Mayor Brown, we have one remaining delegation.
Okay, so can we have that one remaining delegation then?
Sylvia.
Hello, my name is Salty, and I'm sorry for another delegation. So this is in response to the minutes, or the summary of recommendations regarding last week for the e-bus program. I think it's great, and there's a lot of very good information in that, and there's some additional points I'd like to discuss. So when it comes to forecast modeling, there's different reasons why you forecast. There's, if I'm planning for this budget, I might want to lowball my ridership numbers to make sure finance is happy, that we don't have a deficit, because they're much happier at surpluses. But when we're planning for longer-term growth, we need to plan for what if there's a higher growth case, and I'm concerned that the numbers for this do not fully consider or inform staff in this report potential costs and risks to the system. Next slide. So here is a chart showing ridership. So I have the data going all the way back from 2005, there's the break for the pandemic, and then for last year, we were up to 40 million rides. So long-run average over this 18-year period, that's all of the data I have, I don't have ridership data from before 2005, so this is the entire dataset that I can get. The long-run average ridership growth is 8.8%, and it is even counting being slammed by a pandemic, which is a, hopefully, once-in-a-lifetime event, and we won't see this for many, many decades. It's not something you can plan for, but even in spite of that, causing major delays to all sorts of things, we still have seen an average of 8.8%. So what does that look like? In the report, it talks about a projection of 76% increase for buses and service hours, and if we project that 8.8% forward to 2041, we're actually looking at is an over 350% increase. I'm not saying that that's definitely going to happen, but if that's the average over the last 18 years, it's a potential scenario we need to plan for. And I don't, hopefully, that will be coming in the future report. I'm sure that will be more detailed information than council needs for further decisions on this. It has, in 2018, I was there, I believe it was Alderley, where Alex was presenting, on the need for the third transit facility, it was May or the summer, anyway. We're all, I think we're currently looking at a 2027 opening facility, that's when we're pretty sure it's going to be open. So that's nine years. In this report, it talks about in 2034, we are going to need a new facility. But what's nine years before that? That's 2025, and that is assuming the ridership numbers, which are significant, or their projections, which are significantly below the long-term forecast are correct. If it is more representative of our long-term ridership growth, then we are going to need it before that. In other words, staff effectively needs to bring forth either this year or next year, but preferably this year, or report on locating a fourth maintenance and storage facility. If we don't move forward with it promptly, we run into serious operations. I believe the maintenance and storage facility was originally planned to open in 2024, and I'm sure some of the delays are due to the pandemic, but there's all sorts of things that can come up. For example, from what I understand, the war in Ukraine has affected material access, and that's causing prices and stuff, and so there's all sorts of different things that are affecting the city and may affect procurement. So we have to move forward with that soon, and...
One minute remaining.
Yes. On articulated buses, it's under 20% for the fleet. In order to make that kind of ridership growth work without costing a huge amount on operating cost, we need to move heavily for articulated buses. Next slide. Yes. So here are the numbers on that and it's, we need to plan for this stuff soon because 2034 might seem like a long time, but that's how long it takes to go through the entire process of finding a site, doing your environmental assessment, doing your bids and contracting, getting it billed, having it fully inspected, all the certifications. Thank you. That's my delegation.
Motion received. The delegation moved by councillor Santo, seconded by councillor Visante. All those in favor?
Mayor Brown, we can also bring forward the summary of recommendations and approve those at this time.
Move by councillor Santo, seconded by councillor Visante, the delegation and the summary of recommendations. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to government relations matters. Um, and we had a, we had some good advocacy this week in, in Ottawa, but Andre, if you want to share your update.
Instead, there are a number of regional committee meetings scheduled, uh, for this coming Thursday. The next regional council meeting will take place on May the ninth.
Next slide, please.
One item we wanted flagged for you today is the diversity, equity and inclusion update, um, a for information report that is featured on the diversity, equity and anti-racism committee agenda. The report speaks to the complexities faced by international students and to the need to advance the goals identified in the Brampton Charter for improving the international student experience. Furthermore, the report also speaks to the establishment of the International Student Collaborative, which will focus on development of implementation plan and advocacy strategy. This is an excellent example of cities, of the city playing a leadership role, advocating and actively taking a leadership role on some of the key priorities for the council. City staff from the community safety and wellbeing office from government relations, as well as from planning, building and growth, management will participate as city representatives on the International Student Collaborative. Next slide, please. Moving on to provincial updates, the government has announced allocation of approximately hun- $155 million from the 2024 Ontario budget to accelerate the construction of new and redevelopment of long-term care homes. This is part of a larger 6.3 billion initiative targeting 58,000 new and upgraded beds across the province. Staff observed that seniors aged 65 and older represent one of the fastest growing population segments in the region of Po and the city of Brampton. It should also be noted that long-term care beds count towards Brampton's municipal housing pledge. Staff would require additional detail to fully assess impact and potential benefits to the city.
Next slide, please.
Next, we have a significant announcement, a joint, significant joint announcement by the province, federal government, as well as Honda Canada of an investment of $15 billion to create Canada's first comprehensive electric vehicle supply chain in Ontario, which includes building four new manufacturing facilities and is expected to be fully operational by 2028. The project is anticipated to generate over 1,000 direct manufacturing jobs and thousands of additional indirect employment opportunities. City of Brampton's Economic Development Office is tracking this initiative to determine opportunities for Brampton businesses in the supply chain and other indirect jobs and opportunities.
Next slide, please.
Also earlier this week, the government has announced plans to introduce legislation that will expand WSIB coverage for municipal firefighters to include presumptive coverage for skin cancer in addition to the already covered cancers, heart injuries and PTSD, reducing the required service duration for comprehension from 15 to 10 years. Enhanced protections and benefits for frontline municipal firefighters reflect their increased exposure to health risks. City staff are assessing this legislation to determine any potential impacts or benefits for Brampton Fire and Emergency Services.
Next slide, please.
As the mayor has already mentioned, this past Monday, members of council and senior staff met with members of the federal cabinet, as well as senior staff in Ottawa to advocate for key city priorities. Discussions followed on, focused on higher order transit, particularly completion of Hazelmeckan Line, LRT, housing and infrastructure, supports for asylum claimants and international students, auto theft and community safety, and a modernized municipal growth framework. Direct advocacy with key decision makers in Ottawa is part of the city's work to strengthen collaboration and identify alignment with federal priorities on key city initiatives. The GR team would like to, uh, like to thank members of councils, senior leadership team and department staff for their support, for the support provided in preparation for, for yesterday's meetings. A team Brampton was able to put forward a strong case for, for city priorities. And staff will continue to advocate on behalf of the city with key decision makers, both at the federal and provincial level.
Next slide, please.
In further federal updates, the government has announced changes to, changes intended to improve the startup visa program. The changes are to encourage the designated venture capital firms, angel investor groups and business incubators to focus on the most promising proposals through capping the number of permanent resident applications for proceeding each year to those associated with no more than 10 startups per designated organization. Priority processing will be provided for entrepreneurs whose startup, startup is supported by a Canadian capital or by business incubator that is a member of Canada's tech network. Staff initial assessment indicates potential impacts to Beehive and Altitude Accelerator operating in Brampton. More information is required to fully assess impact and potential next steps.
Next slide, please.
Last federal announcement we wanted to flag for your attention is, is an end of temporary policy that allowed international students to work more than 20 hours per week off campus. This policy came to an end yesterday and will not be extended. As of this fall, the number of hours students may work off campus per week will be capped at previous limit of 24 hours. The government has indicated that allowing students to work up to 24 hours a week is to ensure they are able to focus on their studies with having an opportunity to work if necessary. As you'd be aware, City of Brampton Council has been at the forefront in advocacy for international students' wellbeing, including necessary support and housing options.
Next slide, please.
And the last update in today's presentation speaks to FCM in response to 2024 federal budget, including recognition of investments towards tackling challenges such as homelessness and municipal infrastructure. FCM also applauded the government for initiatives intended to address the current housing crisis. FCM has urged the federal government to bring together all levels of government to discuss new municipal growth framework that will provide more effect, more effective, long-term supports for communities. The city continues to work with FCM and with the federal government to address priority issues including housing, transit, infrastructure and the need for fiscal municipal sustainability. Brampton Council has also expressed support for FCM's work and advocacy on these key issues and the city's advocacy also continues. This, this concludes today's presentation and thank you very much for your attention.
Uh, councillor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I'd like to know more information on, I know we're looking at that, the firefighter support. Um, I'd like to know more information. And chief, I'd like to also know if this is something that we're already doing in-house, so if it doesn't really mean anything for us, but I'd like to know that because I know that what we do, um, already for our firefighters is, is in, in the ballpark of, I think, what I'm reading here. Um, so I'd be curious as to, to what this actually means for us.
Sure. Uh, through, through the mayor. So this is just, uh, on the one skin cancer, a big part of this announcement was, um, providing this protection to wildland firefighters. So I don't suspect a big change and we'll continue with all our decontamination procedures, protocols that we focus on.
Which then I would, I would ask, the, the major thing for, you know, skin cancers or any kind of those, uh, the chemicals that are in the air comes from the furniture that is in the houses that our firefighters are going into. And so unfortunate to hear that, but, um, if we can get down to seeing if there's anything else in here.
Yeah, through, through the chair, one of our key focuses is really, you know, decontamination and to how quickly they get cleaned, uh, the different types of bunker gear that we have. All the, it's, it's really on policies and procedures too, to ensure that they're being vigilant and cleaning and doing as much as we can so we reduce this, the potential that they would ever have to, uh, suffer any cancer, workplace-related illness.
Is there anything that we think might be in here for any of the checkups? I know we, we do some kind of early warning checkups at this, uh, city right now for our firefighters. Is there anything in this that may be, um, providing another level of that?
Through the mayor, no, there is nothing. This is really just adding, I think there's 18 cancers that are already there along with the heart condition and PTSD. So this is just adding skin and then gonna reduce the duration. I suspect on the number of cancers, all 18, down to 10 years, but I think we have to wait and see what exactly the legislation looks like because they're usually around 15 to 20 years. Um, but I don't expect it to have much of an impact other than if a firefighter does get skin cancer or some other cancer, they'll be eligible for WSIB coverage earlier than they may have normally because to your point, the fires that we go into are, they burn hotter, they're more dangerous with the carcinogens, the, uh, the PHs or the, the hydrocarbons that are off gas during fire. So, um, we, we focus on this all the time. We send our firefighters for early screening. I think one of the only departments that I know of around that actually does that, that we cycle them through and we actually use the 10-year threshold to cycle people through because of the WSIB legislation. So we've been doing that for a few years now.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, hon.
Councillor Tour.
Thank you through, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask you to comment and, and say thank you to, uh, Chris and the GR team and the CEO team that participated and helped us prepare for the, uh, federal advocacy data we just came back from. Things were very positive. I honestly feel more that this was a better use of time and more positive than, you know, some of our, sometimes we do the other advocacy work, whether it's through AMO or with NSDID with, with ministers in West Branton and out. Uh, we were able to get some really good face time, uh, with, um, ministers on reporting portfolios, initiatives that mattered to Brampton. And I think we got it going across and, and thanks to, uh, our rank and entities as well that I think they have the ministers well prepared. Uh, we all left the rooms with, uh, some positive head nods and handshakes. Uh, so I'm looking forward to, um, changes that will come in the future, uh, the balls in the federal court. But, uh, just a thank you to all the staff that helped us prepare for this and I hope that this, whether we do it annually or twice a year, uh, I think it is very useful to be this week and year all the way to Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, uh, Tour. Um, so we, uh, thank you to the GR team for the, for the great work, uh, this week. Uh, we certainly, um, were very successful in our, uh, advocacy. I'm looking forward to some announcements that will come from it, flow from it, uh, in the near future, uh, that will be the benefit of Brampton. Uh, we have a motion moved by councillor Plushy, seconded by councillor Power to receive the GR report. All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
This takes us to, our next item that was not held is the discussion items, correct?
Through you, Mayor Brown, that's correct. The winter maintenance will be held until after closed and then that brings us to item 13.3, discussion item at the request of councillor Plushy regarding services for Environmental Education Centre.
Councillor Plushy.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be, I'll, I'll be really brief about this. I, I just want us to, um, keep in mind and advocate for pulling the, um, pulling the west trunk along Bouvet Drive, uh, for the Environmental Education Centre. I don't want it just to be, you know, the landowners of Heritage Heights that are, are trying to get this westbound trunk, um, for the, for the services out in the west. We need it for the Environmental Education Centre. So I really want to be proactive in our discussions with the region to make that understand and to be very clear that we need this for the, uh, for the Environmental Education Centre and everything that's going out in, in West Brampton. So just want that advocacy to be stepped up a little bit and, um, for our, us at the city to be able to be saying to the region that we need this as well. That was all.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think the message is, uh, heard and acknowledged.
Yeah, through Mayor Brown. Um, uh, through to councillor Plushy, staff have been working with the region, but we'll continue to, uh, uh, increase our presence in those conversations to make sure that we bring that pipe across.
Great. And councillor Plushy, I know this project has been a passion of yours, so looking forward to seeing it move forward as fast as possible. Um, our next item is correspondence. Is there?
Through you, Mayor Brown, correspondence was received on consent.
Okay, great.
The next item will be a discussion item at your request regarding Amadea Gate.
Okay, and that is item, um?
It's 16.2.
16.2. Do I have to, oh yeah, new business, okay. Um, 16.2. Uh, this is something I'd like to put forward with, um, councillor Plushy and Brar. We got a beautiful Amadea community, um, in the city that, we actually bumped into in Ottawa when we were there. Um, and, uh, the work they do for the hospital and other great causes in our community, humanity first, is just incredible, absolutely incredible. Um, I think there was a little misunderstanding. When council named Amadea Gate, our intention was that the street sign, um, into the, uh, Mubarak Mosque was going to be Amadea Gate, not a ceremonial sign. And so the community, um, that was their expectation and they're very excited about it. Um, and the unveiling ceremony is coming soon and we just don't want there to be any broken telephone where this isn't executed in a manner with the wishes of council. Uh, I was briefed on the meeting that Protocol and Public Works had with the community. Um, and I just want to clarify that the council's intention was that it would be the street sign entering the masjid would be replaced, not with a ceremonial sign, but an actual sign that says, "Amadea, um, Gate." And, um, I'd be, I think it may even be appropriate to have this motion moved by the ward councillors who I know have worked, uh, um, uh, hard on this and are, are proud to have, uh, the Mubarak Masjid, um, in their ward. Um, councillor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure and I certainly hope a motion, um, is not required. Um, when I moved the original motion, the intent was that if you're traveling on here in Ontario, um, and you come to that intersection, west would be, would be Wybank and east would be Amadea Gate. That's what the street signs would say. So that was the intent of that motion. Not sure how it, how it changed, um, but if we can make sure that we understand the intent of the motion is when you're traveling southbound or northbound, west would be Wybank and east would be Amadea Gate into the masjid. Are we, are we good with that? Or, yeah? Perfect. I know you weren't here.
Through the chair, councillor Plushy, we can process that accordingly.
Okay, so what was the breakdown with, with Protocol and Public Works where the community was told this was not possible? Because I had the same recollection as councillor Plushy, was this was what we had, had, had passed. And so, um...
So through the chair to Mayor Brown, I believe the original motion as recorded was for a ceremonial, uh, s- street naming, not, um, changing the, the name of the, of the street. Um, based on this discussion today, it's clear that we're not looking to change the name of the street on the west side of here in Ontario. It's really just to have a sign indicating, um, the name for the, essentially the private driveway, uh, leading into the mosque.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, like, they're hope their municipal address will become Amadea, like, number one, Amadea Gate. That's why it can't be ceremonial. They need it to be, yeah.
So through the ch- chair to Mayor Brown, we'll, we'll review that, uh, with respect to, to make sure it's in alignment with the street naming policy. Right now, the address is on here in Ontario.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll, we'll review that.
Okay, um, but if that was our previous motion, I think when our CEO mentioned, we may need a new motion. I want to make sure we don't, that, that announcement's coming soon. I believe this is in a matter of, of weeks. And so I just don't want there to be, this is a council meeting, maybe our last council meeting before. I see Megan quickly coming to speak too. Uh, this is our last chance to fix this, I think, before the event.
Through the chair, uh, for clarity, if, if we could have a, a new motion, uh, that would be helpful.
Okay. Councillor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm happy to put forward a motion and, um, now I'm gonna try and use this as a learning tool. I'm gonna ask the clerk- I'm gonna ask the clerks to go back to the original motion and that original conversation, the minutes taken from there, need to understand if my words that I used then were the cause of this and, you know, how I can learn from that and fix it in the future. But as, as you said, Mr. Mayor, happy to move that motion with my ward partner. Happy to second it with my ward partner being the mover. And having that, Amadea Gate and Wybank to the west. I don't know how you change their address because it's here Ontario address. So I don't know how, if that's possible, I don't, I don't know.
Just, if I could, through the chair, just a little bit of clarity. So I would add that it's a street renaming to the language of the motion because I think some of the, even this wording, if I took this away where it says signage, my assumption is that's just ceremonial. Whereas if we say a street renaming, there's a formal process that via Public Works with?
There's no street to be renamed. That's, that's the problem. I don't believe that there's a street to be renamed. It's a driveway and we want it to be, Amadea Gate is the entrance.
So through the chair, then that is probably why it's been at this point a ceremonial piece because that, what you're describing would be a ceremonial renaming. I understand the wishes of the stakeholder, but that's a ceremonial.
So regardless if it's a, essentially what they requested and what we wanted was that Amadea Gate to the right, turning into that. And then we weren't ever changing the name of Wybank. We just wanted that street name. And if you want it to be ceremonial, then?
So I think I can help, where the street sign is, that's actually municipal property. And so that would be, that portion, as small as it is, is technically a renaming, just like we had for Masjid Drive in wards, I think, nine and 10, where the only municipal address affected, and they chose to make that their new municipal address, was the Masjid there, the Great Lakes Masjid. So maybe if we're, if we're viewing that, whatever that five feet is, that that's being renamed and that achieves what Jason is expressing, that would give them the tools to treat this as a renaming.
So through the chair, I'm, I'm good with that. My understanding is the meetings with the stakeholder, they want the official street name changed. And so?
For their portion.
The one on the corner, that's the street.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're not looking for a secondary.
No.
They want the official one changed. And there's a, there's a process through Public Works for that with the multiple other stakeholders, BMO, Fire, Paramedics, PL Region. So it's a longer process, we prob, I'm not even sure we can meet?
But the only municipal address for changing is theirs, there's no one, there's no one else affected. So I see Rob Gasper nodding. Rob, help us, help us try to solve this. You're smiling and nodding, which is a good sign, which means I think you can tell us how to fix this.
So to Mayor, so if you, through the city, we have street names. We're on either side of Sandalwood, it's either Fern Forest or with arrows. So basically, we aren't changing anything on Wybank. We would rename that entrance to the mosque with the name with an arrow. So the two arrows would point either way, so there would be no confusion with emergency services. According to the address, we'll have to work with planning for that change because that's a little bit different. But I think we can, we can go ahead with the change of the signage.
That sounds good to me.
Through the motion, I guess, please.
Perfect. Good job.
Now to Jason, does this language work for you? Megan to Jason. Everyone's happy. Wonderful, love for all, hatred for none. Motion moved by Counselor Pulashy, seconded by Counselor Brar. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The last item is one that I put forward with Counselor Santos, and that is the Jays Care Foundation. The Jays Care Foundation does a lot of work in the GTA and they've started to do work in Branton. It was, I think, two years ago, we opened the first accessible diamond that they put their funds into. And they want to do more of that. And they're having two events this spring or summer. And they just asked, and this is what they commonly do in cities where they try to advocate for their aims, they ask that we provide the grounds. And so I think this is wonderful, the Blue Jays are interested in having the Jays Care Foundation do work in Branton. And I say we welcome that, that interest and waive the fees at the two fields that they have booked. Sorry?
Through the mayor, two dates.
Two dates, two dates, three booked, okay. All those? They sent that?
Through the mayor, Sesquicentennial, one in June, one day in June and three days in September, I believe.
Okay, one day in June, three days in September, the Jays Care Foundation. Sorry, Counselor Tor, followed by Counselor Pulashy.
Mayor Brown, I was just gonna say, if Counsel Santos is approving this motion, if I could please second it? Be the mayor and Counselor, thank you.
I'm happy to have you move it, I don't need to move it myself.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Counselor Pulashy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really happy to support this. Until you said September, when I've been working with a fundraising group that have been renting out Sesquicentennial for the last 12 years and weren't able to get dates in September.
Through the mayor, this is a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Those would not be the dates that they were looking for, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy to support. And if they need me to throw the ball, throw some balls, I'm happy to.
And one thing I just add that might be neat for council to know is that obviously one of the parent organizations is Rogers. And because of Rogers' presence in Branton, they're getting much more involved with Jays Care Foundation. And they've actually been running some of these charitable fundraisers out of the Rogers' current headquarters. So it's sort of neat, I went there once with the deputy mayor and we saw a sea of employees working on Jays Care Foundation work out of Rogers. So another neat Branton connection, but a great foundation is being given energy from the city of Branton. Motion moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Counselor Santos. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to public question period. Any public questions? Seeing none. This takes us to bylaws. A motion moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Visante. All those in favor? Motion carries. Now, as council knows, we have one item that we held down, that's the winter operations, until we can discuss it in camera. I'm gonna suggest we take a lunch break and return in camera. And then we will come back in public session, report out any decisions made in closed session.
Can we have a motion to move into closed?
Motion to move into closed, moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by Counselor Brar. All those in favor? How long would council, 1:15? Okay, so we, we're returning closed at 1:15. Power has amendment though, he'd like to continue talking about it even though he passed it. We'll have special counsel meeting on it. In a continuing interest in transparency, open government, I will report in public session any outcomes from today's closed session business. As a result of closed session today, I wish to report the following. And that is, no direction was taken on our item that was referred. But we will have to move the motion that was held down for the purposes of questions in camera. And I believe Counselor Visante has the public session motion to put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe the clerk had the motion up on the screen earlier. And based on our in-camera discussion, this is, I recommend, this is what I am moving for us to proceed with.
Just be a second. If we're, moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh, and this is for the eight-year term. Have we had a lengthy discussion? I don't see any other, oh, I don't see any other questions. Motion on the floor.
Through the mayor, I'd just like to confirm the other paragraph here. So the added motion regarding the communications strategy is also part of the motion. So the current motion is the eight-year with the no additional services at this time?
Yes. Through the chair, Mayor, if I could, just on that, I know I sent to council the list of, so one thing I, way we could get this out to every resident is through the upcoming newsletter. So I could put a mandated, so that every resident would get it, put a mandatory article with a link to a survey through, so that we could get feedback from everybody rather than doing a separate flyer. We could do something that's going out already, would be more, more cost efficient.
This is something Counselor Tor requested. So Counselor Tor, does this work for you if it's included in the council newsletter, not a direct mailing on this?
Through the mayor, Counselor Tor is currently not online.
Okay, it works, it works.
Thanks.
Counselor Pulashy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want residents to know what they're actually being asked of and to show them what the, what the cost is, what the cost per year is on the added service, what it means to the tax base, and even if we could go one step further to say what it means to their taxes, what that increase would be. If there's an opportunity to do that, then I think that would help determining what everybody truly wants.
And maybe feedback from other municipalities on the number of complaints it generates.
Complaints would be good, but also, which I know would be extremely difficult, you know, but I've been told that a number of the damages that have occurred in other municipalities as well. And I don't know how we find that because I don't think, if a municipality was to call us to say, hey, what have you paid out for damages, we wouldn't tell them. So I don't know how we do that, but it'd be nice to know, because from what I'm being told is there's significant amount of damages that occur when trying to remove windows.
Through the chair, the one question I just have, so we were saying sidewalk clearing and window removal, are you looking for individual costing per resident's household on each item? So council can determine them separately or collective of all the additional bucket of services, one additional number, or break it out?
Yeah, I think that's the story to tell. And if we can provide both and separate, I think.
Okay.
But it just, we have to give them the information. It can't be a question about, do you want it or do you, or not, right?
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've got the perfect balance here. The motion is on the floor. All those in favor? Record a vote.
Okay, through you, Mayor Brown, a recorded vote has been requested on the recommendations on the screen. All those in favor, please stand to be counted. Voting in favor, I have Counselor Power, Deputy Mayor Singh, Mayor Brown, Counselor Brar, Counselor Pulashy, Counselor Visante, and Counselor Santos. Counselor Keenan, how do you vote? Counselor Keenan, you are on mute, how do you vote? I'll come back to you, Counselor Keenan. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote? Counselor Fortini? There may be some technical issues, so? Counselor Keenan and Counselor Fortini, if you can, please text your response into the chat and we can record it.
In favor, can you?
There we go, yes, thank you. Counselor Fortini?
By God, yeah, in favor.
Thank you. So that carries?
I'm still on, I don't think you can?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Tor, how do you vote?
My apologies, because I was trying to enter the meeting. Can you just read the motion again, please?
It's on the screen, Counselor Tor, if you can see it. It's a lengthy motion, but it's the same one as before with the added item that staff be directed to undertake further communication and survey in a public opinion regarding the costing, potential tax impacts, and potential value or damages of additional services, including sidewalk clearing and window removal. That's the only added term.
There is a second clause there that said that we're saying no to this service right now. Could we say that's just pending, right? At this point, 3A, let me do a little dot. 3A, it said to no provisional sidewalk clearing services, window removal services. I would say that should be pending till after we complete the last thing that you just mentioned.
Counselor Visante takes that as a friendly. And will the clerk allow us to, I know we just took the vote, is that viewed as a friendly? Or the clerk's gonna frown upon us?
I think just for clarity, we should do the vote again.
Okay, well, vote again.
Yes. And then?
Just adding the words in, pending the conclusion of the community consultation. Counselor Pulashy?
So I just want to ensure that staff are clear on this. So if it comes back with residents overwhelming support, you might have a council that is looking to add winros and sidewalk clearing. Do we have any idea what that would cost in, to adding that to the contract?
Through the chair to Counselor Pulashy, based on the direction received today, we're gonna proceed with respect to the core contract so that that equipment and resources are in place before the winter season. We would then, if there was direction given at a future council meeting to add in any of the provisional services, we would then go back to the contractor, ask them to hold the prices, we have the pricing in place. I just would flag that there could be some sort of delay depending on when that direction is given. With respect to adding those additional provisional items.
So love that wording, Peter, thank you. I would also probably add that if they're not able to, then we could be looking at potentially entering into a new process for somebody else to provide that service if they're not able to hold that, those dollars.
Through the chair to Counselor Pulashy, yes, that would be an option. I suspect what's likely to happen is a negotiation for time more than anything.
Yeah, but in the end, we have vendors. Again, we want to be able to have a good working relationship with the vendors that are successful. And we want everything to be glorious and happy, right? When we're clearing snow on miserable days, that's what we want. So hopefully we can get there, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll call the vote again.
Through you, Mayor Brown, a recorded vote has been requested. Please stand to be counted in favor of the motion. Please stand to be counted in favor of the motion as it appears on screen as amended. Voting in favor, we have Counselor Power, Deputy Mayor Singh, Mayor Brown, Counselor Brar, Counselor Pulashy, Counselor Visante, Counselor Santos. Counselor Keenan, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Tor, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Mayor Brown, that motion passes 10 to 0 with one absence.
Thank you. Our next item in business, item 20, the confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by Counselor Santos to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our last item in business is item 21, adjournment. Council's next scheduled to meet Wednesday, May 15th at 9:30 a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan and seconded by Counselor Tor to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor? Meeting, motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned.